Well, yeah. Um, I am going for like moving up friends. They are. Her.
Hmm.
And we are expecting Jim to join us. So you could probably just chair from the chair you're in until he shows up and just let the assembly know that we're expecting him.
And to.
Yeah. I heard the mayor's been.
Did you?
Do you go?
Oh.
Check it out. End of part. That's the agenda. Okay, you'll let him.
Right.
Timing, timing too. It's amazing. Very good.
Wow. Um, I was just letting Councilor Southcott know that item seven point which is the WOW, the whale society app.
Yep.
That we can bring them up after part. Drop the agenda. Seven point one.
So give me, give me a hands up.
Yes. Seven point one will be adopted in a minute. That's what we.
Yeah.
Only seven point. You're gonna cut me on the need.
Yeah.
I will. You adopt the agenda, we'll just amend it to move the.
I'll be to get a.
Yep, yep, yep. Good idea.
We're.
So just bear with us, everyone. Um, I'm running for meeting, the meeting today. I just need to get a glass of water and we'll get the meeting started.
So check right there. Today.
I mean, I don't know. Welcome to my.
I already took one of these. Here for each other.
It is.
I but. Here.
So. I don't think it got, I don't know if it was forwarded to us today or if it was caught up in the, um.
Good thing.
Caught up in the M filter. Here.
I don't know. I just, I just, I just noticed it didn't have any, any city address. These are said.
Been blocked lines.
Two years.
Uh, no, you know what? Oh.
Just calling you, Lisa.
I'll be started whenever you're ready, Jim.
Yep.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back after our summer, uh, well-deserved time off. We are gathered here today for the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. And, um, I just will say before we start that we are holding this meeting on the traditional territory of our community friends and partners, the Clam and First Nation. Oh, having said that, I think we have one change to today's agenda. And we are adding something and would somebody enlighten me as to what that item is?
Uh, through the chair to Councilor Palm, you'll be moving up seven point one after correspondence and that's Wows and the presentation from our requested delegation, Susan.
Thank you very much. Uh, seven point one and somebody's going to give me a reminder to that effect. Thank you very much. So I will call for the adoption of today's agenda as amended. Moved by Counselor, uh, Almeida, seconded by Counselor Isaacson. All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. And we move to adoption of minutes, minutes, two point one minutes of Committee of the Whole Meeting held on July 9th, 2024. Moved by Counselor Almeida, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Elliott, you have, uh, comments in this regard.
Yes, please. Thank you, Chair. Um, so the minutes, um, didn't recognize who the chair was for that meeting. And so I'd like the minutes amended to reflect, uh, Counselor Elliott as the chair of that meeting.
Yes, Counselor Southcott.
Thank you. It brings up a question because I noticed that myself and I also checked some other agendas where I noticed that it hasn't been the practice just recently. I'm wondering if we've changed the practice.
Staff?
We do have a list of whose chairs, but.
Through the chair, I beg your pardon. I was getting Chief Drakely to attend faster because of our change in delegation. Um, could you please repeat the question?
Sure. Um, I, I noticed that the chair was not noted on the minutes of the last meeting and I'm just wondering if we had, I didn't go back very far in other agendas, but I noticed that it hadn't been done in previous agendas as well, one or two that I checked. So I'm just, I was wondering if we've changed practice, not that it's a big deal.
Through the chair, not to my awareness. So I think that's just a procedural oversight. So we can amend the agenda to, the minutes to reflect that.
Move to amend by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Isaacson. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. So, uh, now that has been amended, recommend adoption moved by Counselor Elliott, seconded by. Did we adopt after recommending, uh, the?
It's just.
No.
To adopt the minutes and so now it's moved or adopting them as amended.
We've, yeah, we've amended for adoption. Correct?
Move to adopt minutes as amended and then second.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Counselor Isaacson. All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. We move straight away to delegations and we have a, uh, item three point one, Anne Barford, regarding Canada's cruise ship pollution policy. Anne, are you in the audience?
I'm, I'm on the screen behind.
Ah, you're on screen. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I am just going to share some slides. And can you see those now? Oh, there it is. This is very handy to be able to have the live shot and be able to see what you can see. Excellent. And so hello, thank you so much for having me. My name is Anna Barford. My pronouns are she/her. And I am a Canada shipping campaigner with Stand Earth. And I am based out of Vancouver, which is unceded Musqueam, Skamish and Tsleil-Waututh territory. And I'm here today to talk to you about Canada's policies on cruise ship pollution, why we're concerned about it, and a little bit of our analysis and a report we released recently, and ask for your help and advocacy on this issue to the federal government. Um, originally my co-author Anerry Guard was going to give this presentation, but one of the joys of working with co-authors is that we can cover each other on our presentations. And if schedules change, and so you may have received correspondence from her, but I'm with you here today. Uh, we work together quite closely. Uh, so. Uh, there we go. Since 2021, uh, we have been breaking records for passengers along the Alaska route. And both for passengers coming to B C as well as passengers coming to Alaska. And this is an area, um, of noted growth for the cruise ship industry as a whole. Uh, the Alaska route is certainly growing along with it. Uh, many of these vessels travel along the inside passage, including past coastal communities, uh, like where you are in Powell River. Um, I won't go into the details on it here, but we commissioned an independent analysis in 2022 and that found that the economic benefits of this cruise ship based tourism are often inflated and are overinflated compared to other forms of tourism for local communities. And so from our perspective, there's simply no reason not to be regulating the pollution that comes from these vessels. Uh, when we talk about that pollution, we're talking mainly about water pollution, wastewater pollution. Um, the three most voluminous water streams, um, are sewage and gray water. Uh, sewage is what you think it is. It's what goes down the toilet on these ships. Uh, gray water are, is adjacent to sewage, but is not industrial. So this is waste that comes from laundry, sinks, showers, kitchens, uh, pools on cruise ships or water parks, uh, would create gray water. Gray water sounds friendlier, but is often just as contaminated, if not more contaminated than sewage waste, and it is much more voluminous. And the final waste stream is scrubber wastewater. Uh, scrubbers are an emission sheet device that turns air pollution into water pollution by sort of rinsing some of the toxins out of the exhaust and unfortunately transfers them straight into the water dumped into the ocean. And this technology allows ships to continue burning cheaper dirty fuel that otherwise would be banned at, uh, through international regulations. Uh, this wastewater is pili acidic, a major concern to wildlife and seafood, including salmon and southern riverine killer whales. Um, but especially shell forming organisms like crabs, oysters. Uh, it contains heavy metals, uh, pHs. It's an exhaust tea. So all of the nasty things that could come out of a very dirty fueled car, uh, would also be, um, in this waste stream. Uh, and it's over 90% of the waste coming out of cruise ships. So for a cruise season in 2022, uh, the government of Canada number is estimated that we had 40 billion litres, uh, of this pollution stream, uh, out of cruise ships on the West Coast alone. Yeah. Canada's policy with respect to cruise ships has been largely voluntary before 2020. And in 2022, uh, this council or members of this council may recall, uh, a resolution on scrubbers at UBCM, which was supported unanimously. Uh, and shortly after that, uh, Canada, Transport Canada specifically brought in, uh, more stringent voluntary regulations, uh, and then an interim order, um, sort of as a response to those coastal voices. That interim order and in June of 2023, uh, outlined some uh, measures with respect to sewage and gray water and included specific fines for cruise ships making the violation. And at first glance, uh, the rules somewhat matched what Alaska and Washington state had brought in. Uh, previously, B C was a bit of a toilet bowl relative to our Pacific coastal neighbors, uh, but with the interim order being brought in, uh, those rules looked like they were being matched. Uh, an interim order is a temporary measure. Uh, this one lasted for a year. Uh, and so a year later, just this past June, uh, Transport Canada brought in another order, uh, with absolutely no changes since 2023. And this was by all accounts and purposes, a step in the right direction, um, except for the fact that there was some major exemptions. The interim order, uh, discussed distance based regulations and so ships are not meant to discharge within three nautical miles of shore, which is an important consideration for a cruise ship that has several thousand passengers onboard. Um, however, if ships did not invest in tank storage, they were allowed to discharge in narrow passageways. And so this undermines the interim order, uh, because all of a sudden ship owners were incentivized to keep their small tank structures and not to invest, uh, and in the protection of the coast because they could use this exemption to discharge in more places. And the, uh, the interim order also did not extend to all of the territorial seas. So some of those toilet bowls were left like in the middle of the Great Bear Sea in areas where ships, particularly very large vessels, um, could navigate relatively easily to discharge as they wished. And the interim order also did not include the most voluminous waste stream of scrubber wastewater. It's just completely unmentioned. Um, this is deeply ironic because it is the most readily preventable of all the waste streams I have mentioned. It just requires cleaner fuel, which are already available on the market. Um, in terms of what these geographic exemptions look like, as ships navigate to more narrow places like important habitat and in Johnson Strait, um, in more narrow areas where we would expect or want for more strong protections. These are where storage tanks exemptions allow ships to take advantage, um, and discharge if they have not invested in larger storage tanks. And so this is creating a problem where, uh, we have the interim order undermining its own goals in terms of protection and protection of critical habitats and as well as food harvesting areas, um, and important areas for wilderness tourism and places where there are communities. And to give you a sense of sort of how this extends and what else is included in the report that we released specifically on these interim orders. Uh, as we look up the Great Bear Sea, there are a number of cruise ship routes that travel in through and around a bunch of places where we would have exactly these need for protections and the exemptions are undermining precisely those protections. And the Marine Protected Area Network is a wonderful piece of policy, um, and vessel pollution, uh, is still proposed, not actually addressed in those minimum standards. And so we're seeing, um, Transport Canada and vessels undermine that wonderful project. Uh, uh, we have a number of recommendations to transport, um, about ways that they can close the loopholes and stop undermining their own good work. Uh, we need to designate no discharge zones. Uh, the Puget Sound area is designated as a no discharge zone specifically for sewage, uh, up to the Canadian border. We should just extend that. Uh, we don't want to be in a position where ships are leaving Seattle needing to hold their waste and the first place that they can discharge is in the Strait of Georgia or the Salish Sea. Uh, we want for them to be required to treat that and to pump to offshore where, where feasible. And we need to be closing the toilet bowls and extending, uh, the requirements as far as possible. Uh, and also making sure that we're not incentivizing ships not to invest by, yes, requiring them to hold waste and also requiring them to invest in their holding tanks and be able to hold that waste. And we also need to ban scrubbers. Uh, requiring cleaner fuel is something that California has already done. Uh, we should do the same thing. Yeah. So we had this interim order and sort of steps up from Transport Canada. Um, in the aftermath of that UBCM resolution, uh, we believe that municipalities are not only connected to the coast, but incredibly important voices. And so, um, I'm here specifically to ask for a letter of support to the Minister of Transport to let them know that while yes, the interim order is a step in the right direction. In terms of more permanent policy regulation, we're going to need to close these loopholes, uh, because we have wilderness tourism, sustainable fisheries, uh, iconic animals like killer whales, um, and also health concerns about if we're not addressing these major sources, sources of pollution from these incredibly large vessels. And so I'll stop there and say thank you. And if there are any questions, um, here is my email address and also the team's email address. We're happy to follow up now, um, or later. I will stop sharing my screen as well.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Barford, uh, counsel. If we have questions, we'll start with Counselor Elliott and then move to Counselor Southcott.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation. My question is, um, are you aware of, um, resolutions at either UBCM or FCM that you're, that we could support that would be advantageous for this at all?
Uh, UBCM is in a week or a week and a half.
Next week.
Yes, next week. That's very welcome to my part of the world, uh, soon. Uh, I'm not aware of any resolutions in this, in this, uh, instance of the convention. Um, both of those bodies, UBCM and FCM have previously sent resolutions. Um, and so if this council would like to put forward one, I'd be happy to send some language. Uh, what I'm asking for specifically are letters directly to the minister at this point.
Perfect. Thank you. One more follow-up question. Uh, my next question is, um, is the cruise ship, um, industry quite different than say cargo shipping or other shipping, large commercial vessels? And why would we not want to include all of them?
Uh, so ideally we would absolutely include all of them. Um, I'm not aware of a cargo vessel that has a pool or multiple restaurants on it. And so I do think that there is cause for specific, uh, regulations and policy response to cruise ships, particularly they hang out and linger and make multiple stops and a lot of cargo vessels make one or two stops in this part of the world and then quickly move on to deliver their goods to another part of the world. Cruise ships have a bit of a different model. They hang out. And so I do think that there's a difference in terms of the pollution and certainly the volumes of pollution that are coming out of those. And however, there's no reason not to also be trying to prevent pollution from smaller sources like cargo ball carriers.
Thank you.
Counselor Elliott, Counselor Southcott.
Mr. Chair, I didn't have a question. I was just going to make a motion, make the motion to provide a letter.
Any further questions, counsel? Counselor Almeida.
Um, thank you, Ms. Barford. Uh, the one suggestion I was going to follow up, uh, to Counselor Elliott's was that uh, I don't think it's possible for us to add anything to the UBCM resolution docket at this point. Um, but, uh, one avenue to pursue as you continue on your journey, and I imagine you're talking to other councils, uh, would be to start working towards AVICC because the Vancouver Island Association, uh, of Communities, we meet in April where those resolutions are discussed and then brought forward to UBCM. And so that would be the next step, I would think, after your Ministry of Transport, uh, letter would be to start trying to pursue that message as well because I think you'll probably begin it. It'll be an easier journey towards UBCM, I would think.
Excellent advice, Counselor Almeida. And before we get to Counselor Southcott's, uh, motion, any other further questions? I have one. Ms. Barford, are you from Powell River?
Uh, I'm not. I'm from Vancouver.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to clarify where, where, where this was coming from. Thank you.
So Counselor Southcott. Does that count?
That's good. Vancouver is a good place. My daughters are living down there. Counselor Southcott.
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like to, uh, move that we ask staff to provide a letter for Stand on Earth or, and, um, Mrs. Barford, uh, Barford, um, according to what would be most effective to achieve the object of, uh, your presentation. In other words, provide a letter.
Did staff get that?
Through the chair, if I might add, the intent is to work with Ms. Barford so we directly provide a letter to the ministry. Get her input into it.
Yeah.
Did I clarify it for counsel?
I, uh.
Counselor Del.
Maybe my hearing's bad after the holidays, but I didn't hear what the CAO had to say as a suggestion.
Could we repeat your response?
Through the chair, uh, if I could have Caitlin read out a draft motion and see if that fits with, uh, Counselor Southcott's. Okay. And she's going to share her screen so you actually see it and see if that meets what you're intending. So actually I'll read it out for Caitlin. Uh, that staff be directed to provide a letter of support to the Ministry of Transportation. I think it should say with input from Stand. Drafted, drafted with input from Stan. Would that work?
It'd work for me. Yep.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, do we have a second or first of all? Counselor Isaacson, go right ahead.
Yeah, it's actually a question. Is it the Ministry of Transportation? We're looking at the federal minister just to be, I wanted to clarify who we're sending this to and the actual recipient, intended recipient. Uh, if you could clarify, uh, Anna? Miss.
Did we lose?
Yeah. So I, so I turned my camera off to try and make space for the shared screen of the motion. Um, the federal minister of transport is who holds the pen on these regulations. So yeah, before a second, I wanted to make sure that that was correct. Yeah.
We have a mover and a second or any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Barford. Yeah. Have a great day and thank you for your input here today.
Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your meeting and day.
Thank you. Moving along, we have item three point two, Joe Hargit, regarding purchase of road dedication. Mr. Hargit here. I don't see him. So I guess we will move on and if he comes in late, we could maybe entertain him at that point. So we will now move to item three point three, Lisa Moffett, regarding Cathat Community Voices.
It's going to be left out there.
Why?
There you go. All good.
Are we shy of one? Or we got?
No, we got them. Good afternoon. We have a musical entourage? Excellent.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Lisa Moffett and I'm here on behalf of, uh, Cathat Community Voices. Uh, I use she/her pronouns. I'm a resident of the city and I'm joined today by my musical friend Marina Log S A and Trish Coxage. Feel free to join in. It's a familiar tune. This little town of mine. I'm gonna let it shine. From London down to Skelton. We're gonna let it shine. All around Cathay. We're gonna let it shine, bringing people together, spreading joy. This little town of mine. I'm gonna let it shine. Take action and organize. We're gonna let it shine. Food as medicine. Healing you and me. Bringing people together, spreading joy. This little town of mine. I'm gonna let it shine. Translating B C. We're gonna be connecting local groups. Building community, researching issues you can count on Q C B. From Mount Mahoney to Salish Sea, we're spreading joy. Bringing people together, spreading joy. Thank you, everyone. So Cathat Community Voices is a local nonprofit, um, with a vision that Catha is a resilient community where the values of, oops, I've got it. Inclusivity, sustainability and broad participation prevail in local governments, governance. And I'm going to turn it over to Trish, who's been with the organization for a number of years and can provide some history and I'll talk about the direction that the organization is taking.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm going to give you some background of, this is, uh, the Cathat Community Voices is a follow-up to PR Voices. Powell River Voices Society was certified as a society in Ju- in July, 2014, following a discussion amongst a number of residents about the need for a forum to provide a wider space for discussion on civic issues. We held dozens of events over the years on many topics until the arrival of the pandemic. One of the purposes of PR Voices was, quote, "to promote nonpartisan dialogue among residents and local organizations to advance citizens' values, effect change and achieve common goals." A striking example of this involved our Food as Medicine campaign. We listened to the voices of residents as they expressed their extreme concern over the quality of meals at our hospital and long-term residences. Food was provided by the French for profit Sedexo and was deemed by residents to be of inferior quality. After several events, one of which included a representative from Sedexo and the collection of hundreds of signatures which were hand-delivered to Minister Dix, that Exo's contract was not extended. Meals are now evolving in quality and choice across the province and we need to continue to press for healthy meals for those not able to choose for themselves. Other events that PR Voices put on included democracy and the media. What is the role of local media in civic literacy? The participants included Joyce Carlson, Plody Medina and journalist Kain Agata. Challenging child poverty with Adrian Montani, Provincial Coordinator B C Child and Youth Advocacy Coalition and locals Lynn Adamson and Russell Brewer, then a city councillor. It provoked discussions on actions around housing, food security, youth services or lack thereof. Chamber of Commoners events to bring a wide group of ind- Commoners events to bring a wide group of individuals and organizations together to share food, have fun, and make new acquaintances. Here, we explored commonalities we share to become more effective in our journey toward resiliency and other shared goals. Converging visions: listening, learning, understanding. Future is now. Youth Voices and Thriving Communities with Matt Hearn, founder of Groundswell Vancouver, Car Free Vancouver Day, and many other community projects. He was joined by local youth changemakers, including Ruby Barclay, Gary Gonzalez, Asia McGrath, and Devon Peel. Several events on the local economy were held, including Take Back the Economy with Catherine Gibson, and co-sponsored with First Credit Union, VIU, the Taos Institute, and Townsite Brewing. This was about strengthening and organizing what is already working in the community, as it is about developing new practices to face changing circumstances. And we held many other events to inspire, inform, raise questions, and bring people together. Now, we move on to the renewed journey.
Thank you, Trish. So, part of our renewed journey is we start with art, hence the song that we brought to you today. And we use art to engage residents in creative conversations and take issues on actions affecting our local area. We intend to do this by connecting with local organizations to pool resources together for greater impact. Some recent events that we hosted included a BlackBerry Festival QCB Lounge, where we had cornhole and giant jenga and seating for people. So, people grabbed their dinner and came and hung out with us. One family stayed for two hours. The kids would not leave the giant jenga. And we attracted people from all walks of life, including a respite place for a breastfeeding mother. We held a transportation forum at the library on August 21st, and speakers included Vivica Ellis from the Centre for Family Equity and Sharon Kravitz from Let's Ride Make Transit B.C. Wide. Thank you to councillors Almeida, Southcott, and Isaacson, as well as Regional Board Chair Bradner for joining us and providing some context on both B.C. transit and transit issues locally, as well as the ferries, and provided guidance for us to take action, leading into this provincial election. We have an upcoming event that we're organizing, so keep an eye and ear out for it, called the Mycelium Mixer. Mycelium, where, you know, the network of fungi works underground to connect everybody. And we're inviting volunteer-run organizations to get to know each other better and having activities like trivia and bingo as icebreakers. We have annual membership of $10 a year, and people can email us at kethatvoices@gmail.com or follow us on Facebook at Kethat Community Voices. Happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much for sharing, council. Do you have any questions? Councillor Isaacson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just curious, is there any asks of councils today, or is it just to let us know that this is going on?
Yeah, this is reintroducing the organization to council and the community today.
Thank you.
Southcott, and then Councillor Elliott.
Yeah, just a quick one. Didn't this organization start, PR Voices, start well before 2014? Because I seem to remember, it was... Thank you. No, I think it started before 2014. It was going for a couple of years before for them, as I remember, but then it incorporated or it became a society in 2014? Okay, disregard.
Bless Rob.
Okay, Councillor Southcott, thank you very much for that. Councillor Elliott?
Oh, thank you, Chair. I wanted to say thank you for the song. I really enjoyed it. I appreciate when we bring music into our meetings. I don't really have any questions, but I'm curious how your forum on transportation might have had some actions coming out of it and what those might have been.
Yeah, thanks. So, there is some direction to reach out to the provincial minister now to discuss issues that this community has around ferries. We heard stories of people who need to use ferries for medical reasons to get to the lower mainland. And one of the things that we're concerned about is priority boarding for those folks, and then, you know, consistency and the ability to attract and retain staff from B.C. ferries so that we have some stability in this highway connection. And then, Councillor Almeida has shared information that, you know, B.C. Transit is doing this service review in 2025, and we're not likely to see any changes to service in transit here until 2027. But now might be the time for us to write to the minister, the provincial minister, and get provincial-wide transit in the mandate letter for the incoming transportation minister.
Okay, thank you so much.
There is also a look for an article coming out in The Peak. I've written an article. Shane has it, so it should be coming out in the coming week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. And we move along with today's agenda. We have item 3.4, Megan Hildebrand, regarding reconciliation with the Tla'amun Nation. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. I didn't expect to be on the agenda twice. I'm feeling a little conspicuous, but here we are. Thank you for the privilege of addressing you today. My intention is to make a positive delegation in response to statements that have been made here and in recent events about reconciliation with the Tla'amun Nation. I support the name change, but the core issue is deeper. I've lived in Powell River for 20 years. I was born and raised in Whitehorse, Yukon. There were Indigenous kids at school, and some were my friends, despite the casual racism around me, including my own home. My whole family could chuckle at my dad's racist jokes and accept his derisive attitude towards anyone not white like us, or even with an accent. Because of this and the education I received, whitewashing the founding of Canada and framing the Gold Rush as the foundational story of the Yukon, I grew up not only without knowledge of Indigenous history, but without knowing or wondering why. Many Indigenous people in the North lived in poverty and were clearly suffering with addictions in public. When my husband and I came to Powell River as newlyweds in 2004, we didn't know anyone. We just saw a beautiful, small city on the ocean. It was also affordable at that time. Some of the first people we met were Tla'aman, and that's who made us feel welcome. Through them, I was amazed to learn that local artifacts had been dated far back as 10,000 years. It was through those friends that I learned about residential schools. Their parents and grandparents were there, and the pain is still alive and still unfolding. I was horrified, but not for a second did I consider disbelieving them. The opposite happened. Things started to make sense to me. Things I had witnessed growing up and what I was seeing in Powell River, such as the existence of the reserve, now Tla'aman lands. All of that is to say that I don't have any experience of a Powell River that isn't completely tied to Tla'aman. Tla'aman people are of this place in a profoundly rooted way. The language is from here. There are words born of the same geographical features we see now. Moving here put me on my learning continuum. I'm really grateful for that. I have a long way to go, learning and unlearning to do, and relationships to build. Phrase keeps showing up, that there can be no reconciliation without the truth. I happen to agree with that statement. The truth has been verified. The Indigenous people of Canada were targeted for extinction or assimilation at the hands of the same ruling bodies now in place. Despite an apology from Prime Minister Stephen Harper in 2008, there has been little to no justice for the atrocities they suffered. They have legitimate grievances, the truth of which have come to light through the lived experiences of survivors right here and the testimony shared at the TRC. The Pope has called it genocide. The harm and the inequality is ongoing. Their survival is to be celebrated, but the scale of the loss in terms of land, language, culture, and human life is staggering. I would add that reconciliation cannot even begin until the harm stops being inflicted. Pardon me. Attitudes are spreading that could seriously undermine the progress we've made as a city and a country, and is already causing pain and hardship to the people whose stories are being disregarded. I believe the survivors and their descendants. I would never ask them to dig up their loved ones to prove what they have been saying all along. No child should be stolen. No child should die at school. The group pushing back on the name change request claim they are not being heard. They are being heard loud and clear. People are heartbroken by last night's event. Those denying or downplaying the harm seem to fear that we have something to lose through reconciliation. I say our community has infinitely more to gain. My intention is to make a positive delegation today. I'm grateful to my friends from the Tla'aman Nation for putting me on my learning journey. The farther I go down this path, the richer my life has become. I have made many new friends on this journey. I'm grateful that we have elected city councillors who see the value of a good relationship with the nation. Powell River and Tla'aman are not separate. We share this city. I am asking council to lead with courage, care, and compassion to guide us through this difficult time by creating ways to collaborate with the nation and by respectfully responding to their requests. We have been offered a tremendous opportunity to redefine ourselves as a community, and I will not be giving up. Emote.
Thank you, Ms. Hildebrand. Really appreciate those comments from the heart. Council, do we have any comments? Thank you, Councillor Elliott.
I just want to say, emote.
Yep.
And I want to add my thanks to that. Thanks for coming out and sharing your point of view and your understanding of the situation we live in. I know it's not easy to come here and speak in front of a big crowd. You've done a good job, and I appreciate the letter. That's actually the next thing on our agenda under correspondence that came from you. So, thanks for coming and sharing tonight.
And thank you for being brave, Megan.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. It's not easy stepping up there.
Woo!
You better get a drink of water in the back. Any further comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that leads us to correspondence, and we have a letter dated July 30, 2024, from Megan Hildebrand, regarding July 9, 2024, Committee of the Whole Meeting. Councillor Dought.
I'll just make a motion that we receive this for information. I've read through, and it's a good letter, and I appreciate receiving it.
Thank you, Councillor Dought. Moved by Councillor Dought, seconded by Councillor Southcott. Any further comments? Bearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Much appreciated. Item 4.2, an email received August 16, 2024, from Levi Memco, I hope I pronounced that right, regarding residential school denialism. And, council, what is your wish? Councillor Dought.
I'll move that we receive and file this. It's another point of view on residential school denialism, and I appreciate receiving it from the author.
Thank you, Councillor Dought, seconded by Councillor Southcott. Bearing no further comments, all for adoption? unanimous. Thank you. Next, item 4.3, an email received August 20, 2024, from Mr. Jack Barr regarding construction of the new bus layby. And I'm sure council have all had a chance to read this letter. What is your wish? Councillor Isaacson, and then Councillor Dought.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I do have a motion. I'd followed up with Mr. Barr to see if it was all right to put on the agenda, because these are questions that I also had when we had the presentation from the Ministry of, or from B.C. Transit. And so, I think us getting some clarity on what it will take to resolve the issue of not having transit shelters yet at the bus stop. I know it was an issue that was important to a number of members of council when we first had the update about the new transit hub going in. And so, I will wait to make a motion though until after other comments or questions from council.
Thank you for placing this on the agenda, Councillor Isaacson. Councillor Dought.
Yeah, and I am planning to make a motion too, having read the letter. There's a number of questions in the letter. I don't know the right answer to them. I think they need an answer. Everybody I've spoken to about the new bus exchange says, wow, there's a really nice new bus exchange, but what about shelters? And I think it needs shelters. Where they'll come from, I don't know. I don't think B.C. Transit has the money. I don't know if we do, but I think we have to look into it. There's the issue that's mentioned in there about washrooms for the transit drivers. So, I'd like to make a motion to receive this letter to staff to bring a report back to council about shelters and whatever associated expenses there might be with the new bus terminal at the mall and the ways that we can resolve it.
Yeah. So, we have a motion on the floor from Councillor Dought, seconded by Councillor Isaacson, and we have that for discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to make an amendment to add also the options for an agreement for a dedicated driver washroom space. That was also an issue that was brought up in this letter from Mr. Barr.
Seconded by Councillor Almeida. Any further comment? All in favor? unanimous. So, we have refined our motion. Councillor Almeida.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have a thought. I don't think it requires an amendment, assuming that this motion passes. But it appears from Mr. Barr's letter and from our dealings with B.C. Transit, getting a B.C. Transit shelter might not be the most expedient way for us to acquire a shelter. And considering it's now September, it might not be possible for us to get anything set up for this rainy season that's about to start. But when I read the letter, the thought that came to my head was, well, we have a community forest. We have a community that was built on a lot of sweat labor over the years with the different things that have been built by the members of our community here. And I don't know how we can pull this off, but the thought that was in my head was, you know, some sort of shelter made with logs as the base versus a metal shelter, something that we can do from what we have on site that we might be able to execute a little faster. So, if this motion passes, I would love to see some creativity that we can do versus just your standard ugly metal shelter.
Well, I'm going to make a couple of comments in terms of what I had on my mind when I read the letter, and I've had discussions with Mr. Barr in this regard as well. And first of all, I want to compliment Mr. Barr for what he's managed to do to provide on his property the new turnaround at the mall that is serving everybody very well. And I think everybody's very happy, including B.C. Transit. So, let's not lose sight of the generous contribution and the cost associated of that new facility on his property. Now, in terms of putting shelters and washrooms and all that kind of thing in place, and I think part of his request was to provide some funding towards the exorbitant costs that it took to put this thing in place quickly, I would like to very much see that report. And we will probably be having something come back from the community forest, because there is an application on their docket in this regard as well. So, having something from staff plus community forest in the future will hopefully bring some clarity to this issue. Councillor Isaacson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just a question to staff. I'm considering an amendment to specify to receive a report in October, and I'm wondering if that's possible, to prioritize this, given that we're heading into winter season.
Through the chair, Councillor Isaacson, that would be a big stretch, given our staff capacity. I'll turn over to Mr. Bertek, because he would be primarily his staff tasked with that, and we have a number of other priorities around capital projects on the works. So, I think that would be a big stretch. Mr. Bertek, please feel free to add.
Yes, it would be a stretch, but we could provide a report that outlines our discussions with B.C. Transit with respect to the shelters, as far as the other component about compensating the mall for their construction. That topic is going to take a lot more effort to provide feedback.
Yeah, I think the gist of what we're looking for is, you know, we're interested in shelters and the bus driver washrooms. These were a part of the original discussions, and I- and I think they were kind of put to the side so that things could get built. And thank you to everyone involved in making that possible. The question is, what is it going to take to finish this off? And so, whether that's, you know, the costs and financial options and, you know, the sources of those shelters. But yeah, I am less interested in a summary of the discussion. I want to know what the options are to get this done and if council direction is needed to provide staff some direction on which decision to go for. Then, yeah. Maybe I'll suggest an amendment to let staff bring it back a report, and I'll insert in Q4 2024, so this fall.
Councillor Isaacson, Councillor Dowd.
You would need a second for that motion.
And I'm not so fussy about what day we get the report as trying to move the issue forward and get a serious report from staff that provides us with options about how to do something about the shelters. I'd really like to have that report in October. If it can't be there in October, I'd like to see it in November. And, you know, I think it's an urgent enough thing. We've got people using the bus stop regularly. By November, we're going to be starting to get the cold wet weather. And I'd like to be able to tell people, this is our plan, and this is what we're going to do by then. I think we should be able to do that without the amendment. So, actually, I'm speaking against the amendment because I'd just like to pass the motion and let staff get on to working on the report.
Thank you, Councillor Dowd. CAO.
Through the Chair to Council, I've just spoken to Ms. Anderson. What we can do is come out with some options that look at budget amendments. One thing council does have to be cautious of is because this is private property, and we have spoken with B.C. Transit on how they've navigated that. We have to be aware of our limits with what's called aid to business. And so, there may need to be some strategic ways of how we advance that. So, we can talk to B.C. Transit, look at their models and other communities and how they've navigated private land and infrastructure on private land. I do know that Mr. Bertek's already in conversation with B.C. Transit on this matter, so we can come forward with some options for you to consider while being mindful of that aid to business component. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Councillor Almeida.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just a small point of clarity, I guess, based on how I'm reading the current motion on the table right now, or on the floor, I should say. We're addressing the shelter and the bus driver washroom, which are probably priority number one. We actually don't have in the motion, which might need a separate motion, the conversation of shared costs, which, for the sake of time, might have to be a different motion later on. But I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that one as well.
We can cross that bridge when this motion is worked over by staff and brought back, and then we could talk about the overall cost at that point in time. Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that we've got an amendment on the floor at the moment to add the Q4. And I believe because Councillor Dowd spoke to it, that he was also seconding at the same time. So, I think procedurally, we're dealing with the amendment on the floor right now. My comment has to do with just sort of, the other part of the letter talked a little bit about the community forest and needing to be the proponent. It's not eligible, like, for businesses. It's eligible for nonprofits. And I have a question about whether, if a community nonprofit wanted to partner with the business owner and apply for a grant to build the shelters on the mall property, if that would be an eligible community forest project? So, that's my question.
Through the Chair, we can, to Councillor Elliott, we can look into that and see if that's feasible, and we're still within our bounds to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, getting back to the business that we're at hand here, we have an amendment bringing in your recommendation, Councillor Dowd, on adding a report back in the fall. Did that get a second?
Yes.
Someone seconded that. Councillor Almeida was seconded. Well, let's deal with that first, the amendment. All in favor? Unanimous, so we have that added. And we have the new motion that has been amended. So, any further comments? Hearing none? I will just say before we vote that I hear the CAO when she says the private property is the issue. And because we've had community forests donate shelters before, but it's always been on the roadway. So, that's the difference here, just for the public to be aware. So, I wholly support the motion. So, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. And we next move to item 4.4, a letter dated August 26th, 2024, from Glenn Blanket regarding City of Powell River bylaw amendments and the City of Powell River's response. Oh, Council, you've all had a chance to see this. Councillor Elliott.
I would just move receipt for records for both 4.4 and 4.5 as they're related. No, they're not, sorry. They're both in the same way. So, it's just 4.4 then, sorry.
4.4, thank you very much. Seconded by Councillor Isaacson. Any comments? Hearing none? All in favor? That'll be it. Item 4.5, a letter received September 2nd, 2024, from Margaret Hodgins regarding accessibility issues, summer of 2024. Oh, I just will say before discussion that the Hodgins have come forward numerous times with accessibility issues because they have a son that's in a wheelchair, and they bring these issues to light on a regular basis. And it's nice that they're doing that for the community. We really appreciate your input on these various sensitive issues. Councillor Almeida, and then Councillor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Ms. Hodgins for her letter and also recognize and appreciate that not only is she a great advocate for those with accessibility challenges, but what I really appreciate in this letter was that she recognized the growth in certain areas and the improvements that had happened from one period of time to the next, and then also recognized some areas of improvement. So, I like to appreciate because sometimes it's very easy to poke out what's not going well. And when it comes to accessibility, there's lots of areas to improve on. But it was appreciative that she also recognized areas that had improved and gave some suggestions of what can be done next. So, thanks to the groups that are making those positive changes.
Thank you, Councillor Almeida, Councillor Isaacson, and then Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I had reached out to Margaret to find out if she's all right with having this on the agenda because I know this came up last year, and we have adopted the accessibility plan. I forget the exact wording of it. And, you know, we need to have some momentum in carrying out some of the recommendations. I do have a motion prepared to get staff to report back on options for increasing accessibility on city-run or city-permitted outdoor events. I thought I would narrow the scope so that maybe we could have some possible wins in a specific sense. But I see that other councillors maybe have comments, and so I'll wait till those are heard before I move them. I can send a text to our staff so that I don't have to read so slowly.
Councillor Isaacson, Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. So, I just wanted to let Margaret Hodgins and everyone here know that this year's Blackberry Fest was, for the first time, organized by the Powell River Chamber of Commerce. And so, it was their first year organizing it. And I appreciate that the writer thought that it was a good idea to have some designated accessible parking areas, but it wasn't implemented quite right. And so, I think learnings by all could be shared with the Chamber of Commerce so that they could receive feedback and maybe make different plans for the subsequent year because I do believe they planned on continuing with it. I was at the most recent Chamber of Commerce board meeting where they reported out on the Blackberry Fest and their feelings of, you know, the struggles they went into organizing it for the first time and things they had learned. And we're pretty happy with the outcome. But I just wanted to say that it wasn't the Rotary that was running it, but rather the Chamber of Commerce, and that we should perhaps direct staff to forward the feedback from communities in a helpful way to the Chamber so that they're aware of some of the struggles around accessibility.
Thank you for those comments. Councillor Almeida, and then Councillor Dowd.
Just a point of clarification on Councillor Elliott's comments. It was actually a joint effort by Rotary and the Chamber to organize the event, so.
Thanks for that clarification. Councillor Dowd.
And just, you know, much as everybody tries, accessibility to all of our events is really difficult. A lot of City of Powell River was designed in 1955. Marine Avenue is a 1950s street, has 1950s buildings, and it has 21st century people living here, wanting to participate in events. I understand the difficulty of the Blackberry Festival. You know, my mother-in-law is disabled, has a walker. And frankly, Blackberry Festival, we just decided not even to try to get her downtown because when we went there, it was difficult even to get access. The bus loop, by the way, was lined up for, all the way down to Shoppers Drug Mart for people to get on the shuttle bus. But, you know, I appreciate the writer's involvement and pointing out issues in our community. But I hesitate to get too involved as a council in saying, you got to fix this thing or that particular thing because we have accessibility issues everywhere. When we look at the rec center, you know, I don't know how long the list of accessibility issues are there. Willington Beach Park has huge issues for people accessing events. And I think we should trust in our accessibility committee, which we've asked to work on those things, to advise council on what the priorities should be rather than trying to reinvent that ourselves every time we do. But I think we need to have a higher priority than we currently have in making sure that when we do things, they're as accessible as they can possibly be. And that includes what we do, what volunteer groups do, and the committees working to tell us what the priorities are. I think we're going to have to get some kind of reasonable way to take these piece by piece and get the highest priority things first. And we've got some on our agenda this week that we're talking about. And what I'm really trying to say is, let's thank the person. Let's give a priority to accessibility, but let's also give a priority to taking the advice of the committees we appoint to give us advice.
Excellent comments, Councillor Dowd. Thank you very much. And before we get back to Councillor Isaacson's motion, Councillor Southcott.
I'm not deviating too much from this, but just a question. We do have, we do have an accessibility committee, do we not? And I was going to suggest that this letter be forwarded in that direction. I think some of Councillor Dowd's concerns are actually under the purview of that committee. And I also think that at least one of the Hodgins sit on that committee. So, they don't need this letter because that committee would have got this letter. So, I just want confirmation from staff that there is good communication with that committee and that some of these concerns are being looked after because of that.
Those comments, Councillor CAO, go right ahead.
Through the Chair to Councillor Southcott, Jessica LaForte, our corporate officer, does sit on that committee. And I think there's a great opportunity to invite those who we know are doing events that if they wish to run some of their plans or thoughts by the committee for feedback, that's often, if they're willing, might be a good way of planning for better access and different structures. And so, the committee's there, and I think they are very keen. And so, we can leave it to them how they want to entertain that. But it is an opportunity to bring things forward to them if the organizers would wish. And so, we can have Ms. LaForte reach out to the Rotary and the Chamber and see if that's something they might want to consider. Thank you.
Back to Councillor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. And so, the reason for, well, I'll read the motion out, and then if there's a second, I can talk about my rationale for moving it.
Motion on the floor right now.
Didn't make the motion.
No motion yet. And so, I've sent it, and I want to make sure that I got it right. So, my motion is, and I'll explain why, there's something else in there if it's seconded. So, I move that staff be directed to report to council in Q1 2025 on options to increase accessibility and zero waste at city-run and city-permitted outdoor events, and that the report be referred to the Joint Accessibility and Inclusion Committee and a sample of event organizers for comment and feedback before presentation to council.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Councillor Elliott, for a discussion?
I'd like to speak to it a little bit. So, we do have a Joint Accessibility and Inclusion Committee, and I've attended most of those events in the past year, and they've passed, and we have endorsed the accessibility plan. And in that, it gives us some direction on what to do. And so, sending, asking them to give us priorities, they've already given us priorities, and it's now up to council and the city to start to enact some of those. And so, this is an opportunity to take action or for us to understand what would be required in order to take action on specifically the outdoor event piece. The reason that I added zero waste in here is because when we had this conversation last year after Blackberry Fest, this was also an issue that was noted by council members. You know, these two issues are often a question of me and people that ask, like, what's, you know, why aren't there recycling bins at this event or that event? And so, this is about the operations of things that are under the city's purview. As I mentioned before, we've received recommendations from the committee already, and it's a matter of time, or it's a matter for us to start taking action on some of them. And this could be a first one. Thank you.
Heard the rationale for the motion. Any questions, comments? Before I call a question, we'll just make one comment. What we were dealing with here was accessibility, and now we've added zero waste. I just don't want to overburden staff in this regard. I have to ask the question, did we get any complaints about waste at any of our celebrations or Blackberry Fest or anything this year?
Through the Chair, I'm going to turn to Mr. Brett Slaff.
Through the Chair, off of the top of my mind, I can't recall any complaints we've received. I seem to recall someone inquiring about recycling options, but I'm not getting a lot of complaints at this point.
So, this year after the event, you didn't hear any major concerns, correct? Like, last year, we heard specifically letters sent in regards to garbage cans overflowing and all the rest. We didn't get any of that this year, correct?
Through the Chair, nothing came to me.
Okay. Councillor Dowd.
Did you? Oh, you know, as truth would have it, when I was at an event, I think it was the Canada Day celebration at Willington Beach, people did come up to me and say, why isn't there a setup like there is? For example, at the Sunshine Music Festival, there's a whole zero-waste program that goes on at that festival, complete with dishwashing booths and actual no disposable food containers or anything on that whole event. And people did say, why isn't there recycling options available when the city puts on an event, when they are at the regional district? So, I have heard people personally asking me why we don't do a better job of zero waste. And I'm sure I'm not the only one.
Thank you, Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Having a personal connection with some of the members that organized the Blackberry Fest, I know effort was put forth by volunteers to patrol a little bit more, both the evening of and the morning after the event, and also to be more diligent with vendors and be on top of their waste. So, that probably led to it. But just because there was no waste on the street doesn't mean that there was no waste. So, I'm eager to have that zero-waste conversation because I was at Canada Day, I was at... I was at Prisma in the, in the park and I was at Sunshine Music Fest. And there was three different events in our community, three large events and three different levels of waste management at each of those events. So I'm up for the conversation. I am, I guess, a little curious, and maybe this is a staff question. If the, having accessibility and zero waste in the same report, is that muddy the waters? Is that two different departments doing it or?
Through the.
Two reports, yeah, okay.
Through the chair to Councilor Almeida, that's not a problem. We, the way we track things, there'll be assigned to each department. So if you wish to make it separate, you can, but we can still respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on, oh, Councilor Selkirk.
And just briefly, I just want to add my voice to Councilor Dow's comments. Because I, over the years, since at least ten years ago, have also received the same kind of comments. And there is a, my impression is that there's a general desire for improvement in as far as the city goes, like the Sunshine Music Fest, for example.
You, Councilor Selkirk, so we have a motion on the floor. There are no further comments, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you very much. We move on to reports for decision.
Chair.
Oh, sorry.
This is where you want us to poke you and tell you we've moved seven point one forward?
Yes, so seven point one. Somebody tell me what seven point one is. Oh, it's on my screen, isn't it?
Yeah.
Hang on, I can tell you.
And through.
So we have Susan McKay regarding Wild Ocean Whale Society grant kind request.
And through.
Yes, hello.
Hello and thank you. I'm Susan McKay. I'm with Wild Ocean Whale Society. And this is to do with our feral cat initiative. Now, our feral cat initiative is assisting Spain neutering, trapping and returning feral cats to their colonies. Where do I aim this? Anywhere? Okay, and we do this in a humane way. So part of the thing is, what is a feral cat? These cats are out there not, not for anything that they have done or that they have wanted to do. They are discarded, they're, they were pets, they may have been dumped as kittens. And they are looking for a location to be where they can actually join forces, find shelter, food, water, and form these colonies because they are social animals. Some of them are abandoned, some of them are dumped. Sometimes the, their owner has passed away and there's nobody to look after the cat. So that's how the feral cat situation starts. Now, from that, in the colonies, what happens, there are also generational issues with, year after year, cats are being born. So in a colony, and it's unfortunate that my eyesight's so bad, I can't read that. But I do know what's up there. It's explaining about the female cats, that they can become pregnant even twenty-one days after postpartum. They give birth to approximately six kittens in a litter and they can have three litters a year. So we're looking at eighteen to twenty kittens being born. If half of them are, are females, the kittens themselves can go into, into heat in four, at four months of age. So we are talking exponential growth. It's not two, they tell two friends and they tell two friends. No, no, this is like six, eight, ten. And it just explodes. And this is how these feral colonies form and why they have, why they are there. Once the male cats can mate with more than one female, and they do, and multiple times. So needless to say, we need to both spay and neuter cats. The unneutered males fight and that creates a problem with regards to transmission of illness if, if, and injury. And not to mention the community anxiety and noise pollution that they produce. So what we do, we have caretakers. And the purpose of the caretakers, it's very important to have somebody that's there. Because they help us monitor the, the actual colony, check for any illnesses. If there's any new cats that appear that have not been spayed or neutered. They, they're also able to monitor that and the overall health of the colony. Because when we spay and neuter, we don't just spay and neuter and return. We spay, neuter, vaccinate, we also give them deworming medication and anti-flea medication. And they get fully checked over by the vet. So they also feed them and give them water. Now, this situation helps with regards to keeping the colony together and being able to monitor them in a, in a good fashion, in a timely fashion as well. So that they can let us know exactly what's going on. They also allow, they also help us out with trapping, setting the traps, releasing the animals that have already been spayed or neutered. They are ear tipped so that they are, they are easily recognizable. We have scanners to scan for microchips and also they have tattoos. And they're either, they either have a microchip or they have a tattoo. It helps keeping the, the colony together so that the cats don't scatter everywhere and create problems in more than one area. That we can actually start reducing the population in a humane and natural way. The kittens are removed right away. They, they are rescued and they are taken in, socialized and adopted out. And then other than that, we just, our objective is to plod through, get these cats spayed and neutered, make sure that the situation gets under control. And it didn't go. Okay, there. Once we have them trapped, we transfer them into larger kennels with clean bedding and everything else, including a hiding area that they can hide behind. They get food, water, and, and hair. Their kennels are cleaned regularly. And I chuckle because some of the cats, especially the males, are really messy. So in any case, we feed, feed them twice a day. And then they, they also have dry food all throughout the time that they are in holding. We hold them because we have to keep them overnight and prep them for surgery. So that they are able to have the surgery without suffering. And we also have to make sure that we have the numbers to warrant taking them into the vet. We then put them back into, into cages that they can actually be handled by the vet and be able to, to have them inoculated and then, and then proceed with the procedures. It's a long days process, but after the day, we pick them up, they come back into holding. The females are held for three days because they, they receive medicine. Because it's, it's an intrusive operation for them. And so we have three days worth of medicine. And so they're held that long and we monitor their, their health and make sure that nothing have, nothing is going awry with their surgery. The males can be released basically the next day or the day after if they've had some, a little bit of a reaction to the, the anesthetic. But we monitor them closely. And then when we release them, we do a casual release, open the gate, open the door of the actual kennel that we transport out to their colony and release them. Sometimes it takes up to half an hour to do. The benefits are enormous. Number one, there's a reduced pressure on native species such as birds. And I will get into a little bit more about birds in a bit. A fed cat is less likely to hunt birds for food. They, they are healthier because they have been vaccinated and dewormed and everything else. So then they're, they're in a much better position and being able to live out their lives reasonably. They can, they continue to, to hunt rodents. And, and that has been one thing that's been quite instrumental. Because there have been rat infestations in various areas. And without the cats, there's very little that can be done about the, the explosion of the rat population, which is another, whole other ballgame. It also helps prevent people from using poison out there. Studies have also shown that any caretaker that is looking after these animals has, is better mentally, in, in a mental state as well as physical state. Bottom line, it's, it's soothing to help other animals. It's the most humane method overall of being able to TNR them. It's TNVR, trap, neuter, vaccinate, return. So dealing with community engagement and education is trying to get the message across. Number one, a fed cat is less likely to, to prey on any wildlife other than their natural instincts to, to go after rodents, rats and mice. Their nuisance behavior is virtually eliminated after spay and neuter because they, they're no longer in that fighting mode. They, they're much more settled. They, they don't just think about mating. And, you know, if we think about mating rabbits and you always think, well, they're, you know, they're mating like rabbits. Well, cats are basically similar. So other than that, they, they are more settled. The colony growth is naturally and humanely diminished. And it continues to diminish in a natural format. And there are no more kittens being born. Cat and bird controversy, this comes up all the time. Apart from a million pages of research, research that I have additionally gone through recently, because it has been coming up more and more, there are lots of questions on it. The research estimates that there is between fifty and one hundred and one hundred and thirty billion birds on earth. That's nineteen twenty-one or twenty-twenty-one. Let's turn back the clock here. There's no real estimates for North America. And trying to research that is almost impossible. The, the numbers of birds range anywhere from, from five point six to twelve, over twelve plus billion birds. I mean, this is billion, not million. There was a reduction in population caused by avian flu. There are two hundred and eighty million. And apparently it has also been transmitted to some mammals as well as other shorebirds and that sort of thing. And it's not over yet as far as avian flu goes. There was, the main reduction in, in bird population is caused by habitat loss, pesticides, collisions with, with cars, climate change, contaminants and, and cats as well. They forget to mention that there is a million other birds and animals that, that hunt birds themselves. So there's bird hawks in particular that hunt nothing but birds. But that's beside the point. Right now, we're dealing with the cat issue here. So there, and that's, that came from Birds Canada. I'm just, oh, all the sources, sources that I had read and the estimates that they have, they have given us about bird predation by cats are based on extrapolating information from places like the United Kingdom, Australia, New Zealand, in the US, like Texas and, and Nevada and California. But there's really nothing in, in Canada and, in particular in B.C. And I think in B.C., we have a very different ecosystem than in many other locations. So the reporter who actually published that paper in twenty thirteen said very clearly, the reports are so slim and few and far between. And there's no real scientific information and data for Canada. So do the cats get a bad rap? They will take some if they are out there in the wild. Because overpopulation of one species living in the wild can underpopulate another, plain and simple. This is one of the reasons why we want to be able to feed them, keep them in a colony. Because if they are fed, they don't go after as many birds. They, they have proven that, that pets, household pets do not take anywhere near the number as feral cats in the wild. And now those are ones that are not being fed otherwise. Thank you. Any questions? Probably lots.
I want to thank you for that very comprehensive delivery. It was certainly enlightening and with all your statistics and, and and thank your society for all that you are doing. And I believe we have a recommendation on the table to make in this regard. Are there any questions of council? Council Elliot.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Susan. My question has to do with specifically interactions between yourself and our bylaws to, to talk about a, a plan for inside the city. Because my concern is I'm not entirely sure release is appropriate inside the city. And I'm wondering if we plan this exact same process for the areas within the city that you are looking at. And so I'm, I'm curious about that.
Right now, we know of a, we know of populations around Cranberry Lake and we know of the Wildwood populations. The others are just borderline outside the city. But those cats don't just stay there, they also move around if they are not contained in colonies. Cindy, as you are aware, I've, I've presented to the, to regional and literally trying to explain that there's, there is a problem. I mean, these are, these cats are growing, their colonies are growing exponentially and it's, euthanizing is not an option. Number one, you would have an enormous outcry and I might even lead the charge on that. Because part of our mandate is to preserve life, to respect and preserve life. So our objective here is to do this in the most humane and natural way possible. So allowing the cats to be re-released back into a colony where we have somebody that can monitor them. There's one train of thought of doing perhaps a feeding station. And I know that people say, well, okay, we don't want the food staying out there because of the other animals. We, we deal with that too and that sort of issues, those sort of issues. So if they are fed, say, early in the morning and then in the evening, just at dusk, and then the food is down and then it gets brought in. And the only thing they have out there is water. And that is an option. And being able to do this where they're already feeling comfortable and safe is the best method for trapping them. Because that way they're, they are already there. And all we're doing is we're just making sure that we're going to contain them in there.
So I'm understanding all of that from your presentation. My question was whether you had any specific plans for colonies within the city that you've talked to bylaw about that might vary that process in any way. Because my concern is where a colony has been identified as an issue within the city, it's because the area can't have those cats there. So if you're to release back into the same location with all of the people in that areas, you know, suffering from their presence, that's not really the solution for the city. So if relocate was, was an option, then maybe, but, so do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
So if you haven't had those specific conversations with bylaw or have a plan for the areas I'm asking about, that's okay. You just have to say you don't.
We don't have a specific plan for that. The best methods that have been proven is to be able to relocate them back to that area. It doesn't have to be that, okay, if it's, obviously, we don't want this in, in the middle of Westview and it's not happening in the middle of Westview, it's happening out further. Again, it's happening around Cranberry Lake where there's lots of. Again, it's happening around Cranberry Lake, where there's lots of bush and area and lots of water for them. Then there's also the Wildwood situation, and I don't even know exactly where it is in Wildwood. Thank you. Hi.
Chair. About a question of procedure, I see our bylaw officer is coming to the microphone. And when I have thought through what we're going to do tonight, it's probably best to listen to the delegation and have council ask questions of the delegation. And then I was expecting, when we had a motion on the table, I would have a number of questions to ask the bylaw officer. But mixing our staff and the delegation together and council together has a risk to me that we will lose track of what we're doing, whether we're receiving information from a delegation or we're in a debate or we're listening to...
Through the chair.
I understand where we are, and this is taking some period of time, and I want to get to the recommendation on the floor. So we've got a couple more counselors on the docket here that we're going to ask a couple of questions, and then we'll hear from the chief and the bylaw officer and get your questions answered. So we have had, we now have, Counselor Dought, have you spoken?
No, just to proceed.
Go right ahead.
Oh, I've got a couple...
CAO, you want to say a few words first?
Through the chair to council, this is just a reminder that this isn't a standard delegation. This is new, this is unfinished business, coming back to you from July 30th, the grant to aid. So it's been a bit of a gap since we had that meeting. And so staff, upon your direction, invited Ms. McKay to speak on this topic. So it's not a standard delegation, just to make you aware. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Counselor Dought.
Okay, so you know, and I understand because I've been through the regional district meetings where you've applied over a couple of years. And I'm suggesting that the situation in Vananda and Texada Island is not exactly the same as the city. So I understand the process is you identify a feral cat community. You go there and you trap the feral cats. You take them to your facility, then you transport them by ferry to Powell River and then over to Comox to get them spayed and neutered, bring them back, release them in the same place, except for some kittens who you adopt out. And I think that's the process you have.
That is pretty much the process.
So the cats come home and create a feral cat community that's cared for and fed by someone in the community. So the cats are still there as feral cats, but healthier and spayed and neutered. And my question is, I've got about three, and I'll try to narrow them down. So do you think you were prepared to respond to any calls from anyone in the city of Powell River who says, I've got feral cats in my neighborhood, would you come and fix it?
Anyone in the neighborhood that finds a feral cat, I'm not certain how we could deal with it if it, for example, a feral cat walked into, walked into a place in my neighborhood. And I thought I saw one the other day and walking along the street. It was not a cat that I'd seen in the neighborhood before. So how would we deal with it? Well, first off, that's one cat. There is a possibility that we could wind up being able to transfer that cat to a cat facility down in Vancouver, for example. There is one. The whole situation is such an extensive situation that being able to deal with just one cat is almost impossible, really. Because at that point, we suggest that they contact the SPCA, and perhaps the SPCA can actually deal with that. When we deal with multiple feral cats and colonies, then the SPCA usually is not involved, except recently, they have been taking the kittens because we don't have any people to foster them.
I try to limit my questions because I've got 1,000 of them. And I'll just combine these two. How do you identify a feral cat community or a feral cat, yeah?
Colony?
Colony. And how do you tell the difference? I get about four cats that walk through my yard every day on a regular basis, catching mice and other things. How do you identify a feral cat from somebody's pet?
Usually, the feral cats are, you see them roaming around, and they're pregnant. You see them with kittens. You see the males fighting. You hear them fighting in particular. So if you don't know your neighbors or your neighbors' animals, then yeah, it's difficult to tell. You can't actually identify, like this is one of the things when the rumor mill had it that euthanasia was being considered by the city. And that whole thing, you have no idea if you're taking somebody's cat or if that just happened to wander around or if it's actually a feral cat. This is where the ear tip, once they are spayed and neutered, they are ear tipped, you know, if they've come from a feral colony. If they're privately owned, they're not.
Just one last one. So if you're catching feral cat communities and re-releasing, you're going to be looking for volunteers in the community to feed the cats?
Yes.
They'll still be there?
There is usually somebody already feeding them, and the cats keep going back to that surrounding area because there is some food available for them from there.
Okay, thanks. And I've got questions for staff when we get to that.
Counselor Dought, Counselor Southcott, and then we will get staff coming forward.
I have no questions, actually. Counselor Paul, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bylaw officer, one quick one.
Ms. McKay, I looked back at the July 30 minutes, or the notes, rather, for the agenda. At the time, the request was for 6,500, but I'm seeing on today's agenda, it says 8,000. So I'm just curious why there was a change.
It was changed from 6,500, I believe?
Yeah.
Yeah. Part of that has to do with the scope of Wildwood. We were aware of the colony around, a small colony around Cranberry Lake. Our vet bills have gone up, all vet costs have gone up, and vaccinations and medications, right? So that's part of it. Costs have gone up, and the scope of the Wildwood situation, when I was talking, discussing it with bylaws, the shared number of cats in that colony. If I might just add, in 2023, we dealt with a total of 130 cats, kittens, and 17 deceased poisoned cats. So it's been long haul, and yes, we are looking for volunteers. Yes, please.
And just one of the follow-up. Thank you, A, thank you for your service to the community. Would the 8,000 then, in essence, solve the current problems in Cranberry and Wildwood?
What we do is we also have a lot of fundraising aspects. We have donations. We are a registered charity and are able to give donation receipts. We've had some very kind donors, and we've also had some, we've had some grant funds for Texada that have been used up. And we keep looking for other options for grant money. So we have actually changed our, what we know that we had because we wound up actually generating more funds than by the time I reapplied. So I wanted to make that very clear in the sheet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Almeida. That brings us to the end of our question period here. Chief, would you like to come forward and weigh in on this?
Hello. Through the chair, whatever's council, we've had a significant problem in Wildwood. We were working with our partners in the SPCA to curtail the feral cats in Wildwood. SPCA ran into funding issues, so they lost a majority of their funding for that program. And we also lost the vet that does the spay neutering and tagging. So we ran basically out of options. Bylaw, animal control has very few options when it comes to dealing with feral cats other than the numbers for ownership. So we had reached out to WOW to help us continue on the process. It's the exact same process, only this funding would go a long ways, this grant approval would go a long ways to assisting with the same process that we were utilizing the SPCA for.
Appreciate all the due diligence in that aspect in Wildwood. Counselor Isaacson?
Yeah, to get us into an actual conversation, I'll move the recommendation in the agenda package. So that I move that members of the committee refer the grant and aid requests from Wild Ocean Whale Society for $8,000 to assist in addressing feral cat colonies to the September 12, 2024 regular council meeting.
Moved by Counselor Isaacson, seconded by Counselor Southcott. Any further comments? Counselor Elliott and Counselor Southcott.
Thank you, kind of comments and questions to our staff. The concern I'm having with the process of catching cats and then releasing them back into the same neighborhood where they are causing distress for the people who live there is that that may be contrary to our own bylaws and also not a real solution for that neighborhood. When we're dealing with interactions between wildlife and the city, we have processes that prevent us from having too much interaction between people and wildlife and consequences to deal with that if, at the end of the day. So there's some people in real distress in the Wildwood situation where I would hesitate as a counselor to support releasing that number of cats back into that neighborhood. And a process that didn't at least relocate that colony in some way would to an area that was maybe more appropriate for a colony of cats. And I'm pretty sure the neighborhood is not on board with maintaining a colony in that neighborhood. And so I don't know, I know that this is a better solution than what's going on now. I'm just wondering from bylaw and the city whether we're going to run into liability problems for approving a process that isn't helping people.
The chair to Counselor Elliott, I think the issue is that if we don't do something, like I say, there's not much in the tools that bylaw has to deal with a feral cat colony. While SPCA was performing the exact same function, the cat colony, specific complainant in Wildwood had gone down from 60 some odd to 30. So some of the cats died in the process, passed away. Some of the cats were naturally predated on wolves, raccoons, cougars. So the numbers of the cats drastically reduced. That was commented on by the complainant, and he did notice a big drop in the colony. Unfortunately, with the delay because of when they lost funding and couldn't utilize the vet anymore, like that colony has grown. But over time, there was another colony, I believe, on King Street. They used the same process and wound it down to a manageable number for the home that they were being fed from. It does work. It has worked in this specific case. And having an outside veterinary, having an outside process with approved funding for it, it will diminish the numbers. But once they can't produce anymore, I believe that there'd be a gain through natural predation, predation, and just death by natural causes over a period of time that the colony will And we have been working with the complainant all along, and he has noticed it. He is supportive of the process. It's basically one of the only tools we have to be able to deal with this.
Go ahead, Ms. McKay.
So one of the things that, of course, in Vananda, again, was the same situation. The neighborhood was absolutely up in arms. It was horrible. I mean, they were threatening to poison, and then they finally did poison a number of cats. And we don't want that situation. We know that we lost a few birds because of it, a few raptors. So the anxiety level goes down when the cat fighting stops. Then, okay, fine, there are cats. They see that they're ear tipped. Okay, they're not going to be producing more offspring. So their attitude on Texada has changed drastically. People are a lot happier. They're all really quite good about it. And we need to make sure that we involve the community and certainly the locals there.
So we have a speaking order. You're going to move to Counselor Southcott and then Counselor Dought.
I basically don't have any more questions, but I do have comments. And unless we're not in a debate process right now, then I will proceed.
Dought, do you have a question?
I thought we were debating a motion. We have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
I thought we were debating that among council.
Yeah.
Go right ahead. So you have no further comments?
No, I do have comments. I don't have questions to be...
I'm going to dispense with the concept of questions, and I'll follow Counselor Southcott with comments.
Okay, go right ahead, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. So my experience with this concern, I'm just going to be very clear. I'm afraid, Ms. McKay, I cannot support the motion here. Generally speaking, my values are to live and let live, absolutely for sure. But I am not convinced that assisting feral cats to continue in the wild is humane at all. In fact, my opinion would be that it's not. And if cats are being fed, then they're not feral anymore. They're, I think by definition, strays. And I'm not going to debate that. It is debated in literature that is available from Nature Canada and other agencies in Cats are not indigenous. Indigenous species, like most birds, are still not adapted to defending themselves for the most part from cats, as is argued by Nature Canada and others. There is a deep, there is deep division in this community itself. I've been more, as far as whether the policies that you want to follow are supportable, basically from the standpoint of people who want to see cats controlled more, including domestic cats. This was last entertained by the city, I can't remember how many years ago it was, at least four, when the animal control bylaw was being worked on to be reviewed. Now, there's only one article in the animal control bylaw that has any relevance, and it's even marginal to this issue, and that is that only three cats are allowed on any parcel of land in the city, and that would be domestic cats. And only one of them can be on spade. So that is at least one teeny part of what could be considered control. But there is, there are people in this community who want to see a whole lot more control. So we're not even, we don't have, as the chief mentioned, we don't have tools to really deal with feral cats, let alone beyond this, let alone strays. So my understanding is that SPCA has changed their policy to euthanasia from if they can't adopt out cats. Now, I haven't phoned them to find that out, to confirm that, but I think that is a result of being stressed by the huge demand. The long and the short of it for me is that there's just so much unresolved here and so much that... this question just begs all sorts of other questions that I can't support it. So we at least have to have more more leverage from a city standpoint before I can conscience dedicating $8,000 of taxpayers' money to this purpose. Sorry, I wish I could support you, but I absolutely can't. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow that up, a question to staff. Was this a staff recommendation that came forward after we did our discovery? Is that what we're dealing with here? Is a staff recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'm actually going to ask, because I was actually away during the time the agenda was prepped. I'm going to turn and see if Ms. Denton or Mr. Drakeley have a bit more background on this. But this, yes, this is a staff recommendation.
Thank you for that clarification. Hey, Counselor Dow.
Thank you. And I can't support this either. And for a number of reasons. First, the cost of the program has already grown since the last time we saw it at the council meeting. I don't expect that between now and the end of the year that the cat problems that we know about in Cranberry and Wildwood will be resolved by the end of the year. And I expect it will be an ongoing situation which will require a similar or a greater grant funding every year going forward. I have, I share Counselor Southcott's concern about feeding feral cats and making permanent feral cats in the community. We're talking about at least two places right now. And that might grow because other people will say, oh, well, that problem's being dealt with over there, so they could do that in my neighborhood too. I have a concern about, real concern about telling the difference between a pet cat, a stray cat, and a feral cat. Because, you know, as a member of the Wildwood Raphears, we had a person who had rabbits in their yard and cats were coming in and attacking rabbits. So they tried trapping the cats that had come into their yard. And it was causing a huge kerfuffle in the neighborhood because the people whose cats were being trapped were upset and thought the city should prevent anyone from trapping the cats. So I'm not sure how the applicants would tell the difference between somebody's pet or somebody's stray cat and a feral cat. And I think we have, we have a bylaw that really needs updating is the animal control bylaw. Counselor Southcott talked about it. Counselor in the last, counsel in the last term had talked about it a great deal and kind of got lost in the morass of talking about chickens and roosters in different properties, but we haven't updated that. So for those reasons and some other ones that I'm not going to get into, I won't be supporting this.
Counselor Dow, Counselor Isaacson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm speaking in support of this motion. We have an issue. The cats are suffering and the people that live in the neighborhood are suffering. And we have a solution on the, that's being offered. It was starting to work when the SPCA was dealing with it. And the colony was going down, and that's no longer an opportunity. And so we've been presented with this other solution. I'm familiar with the work of cat organizations dealing with feral colonies. I was a volunteer foster with VOCRA in Vancouver. They foster out cats for adoption, but also support feral cat colonies. And feral cat colonies have patterns. They they have territory, they have relationships, and to move them would just, I think, add to chaos and more challenges. Their lifespan is much shorter than a house cat. And so once they are spayed and neutered, colonies drop off quite significantly and quite quickly. You know, there is, I'm not against an update to our animal control bylaw. And, you know, the likelihood of, by the time that that finally happens, we are going to be dealing with an exponential issue. And so while I can understand concerns with this requiring a yearly funding opportunity, the majority of the funds would, would take place in first year. And as soon as that initial population is spayed and neutered and vaccinated, then you're not dealing with the exponential growth. And if there was an animal bylaw update, then we could have it in that, you know, after however long it takes to do that in the next year and deal with the majority of the issue in this first year. The costs have grown, the colony has grown, again, because of the time, you know, with, with, with the litters happening frequently, multiple times a year. So I, I understand concerns with cost. I think the closer you get to an issue, the more challenging it is when you have people feeding a colony. You know, ideally, we would not have people supporting feral cat colonies, but we do. And we're not going to be in a situation where we can find someone into poverty or send them to jail. Like, that's just not what bylaw is going to end up doing. And so we have a solution here. And I think that this this small amount of money deals with a significant issue in two of our neighborhoods that's really impacting the public. And I would love to see this funding for one year address this major concern with an organization that has a track record of implementing the solution on Texada Island. Thank you.
Counselor Isaacson, Counselor Almeida, last word.
Thank you, Chair. Similar to Counselor Isaacson, I will vote in favor of this motion. While the solution isn't necessarily perfect, as Counselor Dow and Counselor Southcott have referred to, it is a solution. And this is a conversation, looking back at my emails, that goes back to the middle of March or end of March. So we're approaching almost six months that of the Wildwood situation. I don't know about the Cranberry one. And I feel like if we don't make further progress on it now, it'll be another six months to a year. Since there's no other solution that's been presented to us so far. So for that purpose, I appreciate the WOW's effort and I'll be voting in favor of this motion.
You. Last word, Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. I haven't spoke to the motion yet. I was just asking questions earlier.
That's why I'm allowing.
So I see this from a longer term perspective, a perspective of interim sort of solution. And I also know that we have huge gaps in how we're handling animal control in our city. So my, my number one concern is that we currently do not have an animal control officer that can make decisions to eliminate a cat colony within the city. My my hesitancy with this, I think I'm going to support it, but my hesitancy is that we are basically supporting a process that is not in compliance with our own bylaws. So our bylaws say that the cats are not allowed to exist there at more than three per parcel. And yet we are supporting a solution that allows that to happen and basically endorses it. And so that is, that is to my mind, a problem with how we're handling animal control within our city where we don't currently have resources for an adequate solution to animal control issues. Other communities that I've been from are smaller with less resources, have animal control officers that can make decisions and handle these kinds of issues. We don't seem to have that in this city. I don't know why that is. It seems that in the past, we had donated to SPCA or something or partnered with SPCA, but SPCA is a charitable organization, just like Susan's, and they don't support certain avenues. You need wildlife officers, animal control officers, people with, with authority to make decisions in order to do actual controlling numbers solutions. And so that is a big gap here in our city. And it can be done contract. It doesn't have to be a city employee. It just has to be an enable, you know, somebody empowered to make these decisions. And we don't seem to have that. And that's the huge, that's why we're dealing with this problem. I think this is an adequate interim solution. I think council needs to come up with a better way to do this. We can't be allowing noncompliance to bylaws throughout the city hurting people and not having a solution to that. I think that's not, not appropriate. I think it's wrong. So I would support this as an interim solution, but we need to get all over this and figure out how we resource making sure that animals are in compliance with our bylaws within our city. It's our responsibility and we're not doing it. Thanks.
Counselor Elliott, well spoken. I have one question, Ms. McKay, that was going through my mind in your very comprehensive delivery. You have a vast amount of experience. Do you deal with bears? You don't have to answer that. Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor. And that motion reads that members of the committee refer the grant and aid request from Wild Ocean Whale Society, WOAS, for $8,000 to assist in addressing feral cat colonies to the December 12th, 2024 regular council meeting. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passed. Would you like your negative vote recorded?
I think it is recorded.
It is? Thank you very much. Thank you for being here today. With not raising my hand, yes, I did. That brings us, yeah, we still have a number of items. No, we only have one item left on tonight's agenda. Sorry?
We brought seven.
Oh, that's right. We've got to go back. We're going to take a five-minute recess right now. Thank you very much.
You got to jump back.
I thought we were. I thought we were at the end of the road.
The agenda. Pretty costly. Well, it's like, I think if it's That's the only place I know of. No, no, no. No, it's not on Thursday. But it was on Thursday. It's not there right now.
Let's get on. I know you're ready to go. Has it been five minutes? Has it been five minutes? Just wait till Counselor Isaacson. Now, where, where did we leave off here? Are we on to reports for decision now? Okay. All right. Permissive tax. Yeah, you got it. It'd be a no-brainer and we'll let staff fill us in. Know one of the concerns that we'll deal with that later. You have a $400,000 cap already. Okay, everybody's returned. Thank you, everyone. We are going to reconvene here and we are going to carry on with today's agenda. We move now to reports for decision. Item 5.1, permissive tax exemption. Chief Financial Officer. Write in the gallery, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting the 2025 permissive tax exemption application for committee's consideration. For background, Community Charter Section 224 gives council the authority to grant permissive tax exemptions by bylaw. Once the permissive exemption applications are received, staff assess each application based on the criteria and conditions established in Council Policy 261, Community Partnerships. This is attached as Appendix A to the report. The policy is a framework to aid the difficult decision-making process and is a starting point for a staff recommendation. But it is completely within council's purview to grant permissive tax exemptions as desired so long as the organization meets the Community Charter requirements, which all applications do. Appendix C attached to the report contains a detailed listing of all the applicants and the recommendation. In summary, applications for 80 properties from 46 organizations totaling roughly $527,000 in municipal taxes were received. This total request exceeds the $400,000 cap established by council by approximately $127,000 or 32%. Of the total applications, there were 45 eligible properties from 42 organizations totaling roughly $364,000 in property taxes, which is within the $400,000 cap. Therefore, the recommendation outlined in Appendix C is to approve 100% of the permissive tax exemption request from all eligible applications. That being said, applying council policy is not a straightforward task because policy is open to interpretation. Specifically for this year, staff identified that 35 properties owned by four organizations for roughly $160,000 in exemptions were for dwellings mainly related to affordable housing. This does not appear to meet the policy condition that dwellings on the property will not be eligible for permissive tax exemptions. However, staff note that it is not fully clear However, staff note that it is not fully clear if this is intended to exclude nonprofits whose purpose is to provide housing. But again, the committee may discuss the intent of this condition if they so choose, which is why this report has been brought forward to Committee of the Whole for discussion before being referred to council for decision. Additionally, three of these four housing-related NPOs also did not meet the criteria to demonstrate financial need. Appendix B attached in the report elaborates on the interpretation for demonstrating financial need. In short, financial need was demonstrated if the organization couldn't afford to sustainably operate into the future without the exemption or if the organization would otherwise redirect 50% or more of their funding to pay for the property taxes or if the organization did not have a reliable single source of funding that funds over 90% of their operations, such as being fully government-funded, or if the permissive tax exemption was less than 1% of their total reliable single-source funding. So three organizations did not demonstrate financial need according to this interpretation, which assesses financial need not in a general sense, but specifically relating to an organization's need for the permissive tax exemption amount. Now on to financial implications of exemptions. Since exemptions work by decreasing the assessed value of a property, it is not only the municipal property taxes that are shifted to the other city taxpayers, but it is also the property taxes for the other authorities, including the Cathet Regional District, Cathet Regional Hospital District, the School District, B.C. Assessment Authority, and Municipal Finance Authority. Council therefore balances the permissive taxes, permissive tax exemptions granted to organizations who benefit the community with the offsetting impact of the total tax burden being shifted to the other taxpayers. So since the financial impact is a redistribution of property taxes, it can be analyzed as the impact on an average single-family dwelling. I have it on the screen, but in summary, the recommendation to exempt 364,000 in municipal taxes would increase taxes for an average single-family dwelling by $89, which is 2.2% of the total property tax bill. For 400,000, it's a $98 increase, and for 530,000, which is the total application, is 129 increase. So to recap, staff are seeking direction from Committee of the Whole to prepare permissive tax exemption bylaws to be presented to council for first three readings on October 10th and adopted on October 24th at the regular council meetings. These bylaws must receive two weeks of consecutive public notice and must be adopted by October 31st, 2024 for the 2025 property tax year. Once adopted, staff send the bylaws to B.C. Assessment, who decrease the assessed values of the properties as directed by the bylaws. With that, I thank you for your time and conclude the presentation.
Thank you very much for that report. We have questions. Counselor Isaakson first, followed by Counselor Elliott.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One really quick one for clarity. You mentioned this is under council's purview, so if there's something that maybe appears to go against policy, it is still within our purview to grant or not grant based on that? Just wanted to.
Through the chair, yes, so long as it meets the criteria in the Community Charter, and these applications do.
Thank you. Second question, I know we had discussions last year and at other points within the past 12 months about putting out an RFP to review our granting policies, and I'm wondering where is that at? Because we're in the same situation we are last year with maybe wanting changes but not having gotten there yet, so.
Through the chair, to Counselor Isaakson, staff have started drafting the RFP, but it has not been issued as yet. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for questions.
Counselor Isaakson, Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Dennison. So some of the organizations that we've identified that's purpose is for affordable housing and have been flagged as not meeting the criteria around having dwellings. We have provided tax, permissive tax exemptions in the past for, and this policy was adopted in 2018. Is that correct?
Through the chair, I believe it was 2018.
I read it, it is, but so it's been a number of years, and we've been providing folks with the Affordable Housing Purpose tax-free exemption or permissive tax exemptions since that time. So it seems to me that maybe we at one have decided that affordable housing, when it's for the purpose of that charitable thing, is different than maybe a caretaker's residence or dwellings on a property that are used for some other purpose.
Through the chair, I would leave that to council to discuss, but in the past, that phrase was generally applied for caretaker's residence. And but what we've seen over the years is a very big increase in affordable housing applications, and then the cap was applied. So that is why it's become into light as kind of a newer discussion. Hey, is that supposed to apply to affordable housing? This is, you know, a growing application base, or is it not? So what was the intent of it? Or, you know, affordable housing applications were such a small part of the application base, and the applications were much lower than 400,000, I think, 2019 and earlier. It might not have, even when the policy was created, been something on council's radar. So it would be a good item to discuss for staff to take back and and document for further analysis for future applications.
Okay. Thank you for that answer.
Counselor Dout, followed by Counselor Almeida.
I will move that members of the committee direct staff to prepare permissive tax exemption bylaws in accordance with the recommendation outlined in Appendix C of the report to the committee titled "Permissive Tax Exemptions for 2025", dated September 10th, 2024. If there's a second year, I'll talk to it.
Seconded by, moved by Counselor Dout, seconded by Counselor Southcott.
So.
So. Go right ahead, Counselor Dout.
Thanks. So we have the applications in front of us, and as we noticed quite a few years ago on council, the applications increase every year. And that means that taxpayers, the general taxpayers, are paying an increasing share of the tax burden every time we provide permissive tax exemptions. There's been a number of proposed solutions to the problem. One is to look at a bylaw and a policy that evaluates a percentage tax permission, permissive tax exemption exemption for different types. You could have a different percentage for sports groups or church groups or entertainment groups or affordable housing. We could do that if we put our minds to it and sat down and tried to make a determination. Other communities do it that way. What we have in front of us is a policy that we will go to $400,000 and look at the eligible applications under our policy and divide that. If we give the permissive tax exemption to more groups, then that means everybody on the list will get proportionally less if we continue with the $400,000. The other choice is that we increase taxes on the average single-family home by a certain amount to provide more permissive tax exemptions. I don't think we should increase taxes for next year on the average single-family home because we haven't even started talking about that. I think all kinds of people are worried about what kind of tax increase there might be coming forward anyway. So I think we should go ahead and approve these and hopefully soon talk about what we're going to do about the permissive tax exemption policy.
Counselor Dout, Counselor Elliott.
I'd like to move an amendment to the main motion to include Life Cycle Housing Society in distribution of the permissive tax exemptions. And I don't know what the amount would be because it probably has to be calculated along with everything else. But I'd just like to add because they did meet the financial need criteria and are being excluded because their charitable purpose is to provide affordable housing. And I don't think that was the intent of the policy, which refers to like caretakers and so forth. And so if I could get a second year, that would be great.
I think I bypassed Counselor Almeida. You're up.
That was a seconding, though.
Oh, sorry, you seconded?
Second, no, she was seconding my amendment.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yes, an amendment motion.
Amendment motion. Could you just state what that amended motion was one more time so I can catch it?
I want to add the Life Cycle Housing Society to the distribution of permissive tax exemptions, and I don't know the amount, so that makes it a little bit complicated because the amounts have to be redistributed between all of the folks. Yeah, their application amount is 12,747, but to distribute it equitably among all participants would be a different number, I think.
100%.
Through, yeah. Okay, so if it makes sense, just 12,747 for Life Cycle Housing Society is the amendment.
Yep. C.A.L.
Through the chair, if it helps, it is, as Counselor Isaakson said, it brings you to 376,640, so well under the cap that you've set.
Thank you so much.
To Counselor Almeida.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question originally before Counselor Dout had brought the motion to the floor. So my question's not relation, related to the current amendment on the floor, so if we want to do the amendment first, then I can ask the question later.
Sure, welcome back to you. We have an amendment on the floor to add life cycle housing. Counselor Dout.
My simple question to that is that there's two other groups, Inclusion Powell River and Powell River Inclusive Housing Society that also are at zero right now. And I wonder why you would exclude those.
Because they were excluded because they didn't have financial need. They didn't demonstrate financial need, so they had double, another reason for not being included. Whereas life cycle housing did meet the financial need criteria, and we're being excluded simply because they are providing housing.
So I have one question. Considering that we're getting a number of emails in regard from the housing front, is this a, something that's going to blossom? Are we going to get a lot more of these type of emails coming through?
Through the chair, I do think affordable housing is something that's growing each year. And so I would anticipate that those applications would, might be something that would continue to be something we receive.
So by adding life cycle to this, it kind of muddies water in terms of opening the door for one and leaving out the rest. That's my problem in terms of adding, but I do get the point that they did not meet the, or have the demonstrated financial need not met. I get your point. But it is a housing item. So Almeida.
Actually, my question might relate to your point there, so I might as well ask it now. Refresh my memory, please, CFO. Last year, when we discussed PTE, I believe we went to a 97% because of the amount that we were at. And also included the parameter of single source being 90% of your, of the nonprofits' revenue was kind of the big categories that we were looking at at the time. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, it was 97%. The way the financial need was analyzed this year was the same as last year. That one that you pointed out, that was one of the four criteria that we look at with financial need, but we use the same method as last year for financial need.
So as a follow-up then, because, correct me if I'm wrong, there are, are there housing applicants that were, that are on this rejected list this year that were approved last year at all?
Through the chair, Life Cycle and Sunset Homes. I will add a note, one thing we're seeing with the increase in interest rates for, and depending on the funding that these organizations receive from, it seems to be mostly B.C. Housing, but there's CMHC, and there's some other forgivable mortgages that are involved, but it's, it does all seem to be provincial or federal government funding. But we did see one of the organizations that is, has the financial need, it looked like mainly because of the interest rate increase. So I know that if the grants that they receive and the support from their funders doesn't go up with that, it will show a financial statement this year different than last year.
I have one further question. Seeing one of the emails today came from the Kiwanis Society and their housing unit. And I don't see them on the list. Why are, why are they not, what, why did they not make the list?
Through the chair, they did not apply.
All right.
Through the chair, they did not apply for 2025.
Oh, okay, but they're reapplying for down the road? Is that why we got their email today?
Through the chair, possibly. Yep.
Very good. Okay, Counselor Almeida.
Just to answer your question from what I read in that email from Kiwanis today is I think they wanted to provide some food for thought for the conversation. They didn't apply because they didn't get it last year. And but they also felt that it maybe wasn't the most fairest of plans and wanted to add some, some food for thought is how I interpreted that message.
As councils wish, you want to call the vote on the amendment? Call the vote on the amendment. All in favor? So that brings us to the motion, which is on the floor. Counselor Isaakson.
Yeah, I've got some concerns with this motion. I think, given that housing has been indicated as a priority by this council, while staff have given us a recommendation based on their interpretation of council policy, we have a prerogative to veer from the recommendations. And I think if housing is a priority, we literally have to put money where our mouth is. And the fact that affordable housing is growing in our community, I'm grateful for, and there are implications that come with it. Gibson's recently announced with their council is shifting their permissive tax exemptions to focus on affordable housing and reducing it for all other areas because they've put a priority on, on housing. Another community, Courtney, they're actually at a June council meeting. They provided or directed staff, I believe, to explore moving away from permissive tax exemptions and instead to a granting policy. So these permissive tax exemptions are kind of de facto grants rather than, you know, organizations applying for grants and us giving them money to pay for their property taxes. We just don't charge them for their property taxes. And I think if we were deliberating grant applications in these amounts from this list of organizations, I think we would make different, different decisions. And so while we haven't had the RFP out yet to have a consultant do some research and give us recommendations on how to improve our giving policy, I think that it's important that we act now. I also want to mention this is kind of a de facto early budget conversation because the bylaw that we put into place now will be in our budget next year. And I think the budget's going to be a hard conversation this year. And so when I was thinking about how to respond to this recommendation and now the motion on the floor, I'm interested in seeing something different, and there's three things that I, I was exploring. One is just to split evenly among all applicants and include the housing in them. I don't know if that, I forget the exact amount. I did math. It was like 76% or something. Everybody would get 76% of their application. Another method would be to debate each, go through them one by one. I'm particularly interested in each of them on a parcel-by-parcel level because the use of each parcel is going to be different, especially with organizations that have multiple properties. There may be some that we support and others we don't, rather than looking at them as an organization overall. And a third option, which I think is kind of creative and might address, might address our pending budget discussions, is cap it this year at 200,000 and move 200,000 into grant and aids for next year. And then this becomes a grant conversation, and organizations who feel that they need the money above and beyond what we've capped it at, which would mean everybody on this list would be paying property taxes at a level they weren't used to. It, it might meet the reality that we're facing as a community as we head into budget discussions, and it gives us more flexibility with granting to organizations that advanced council strategic priorities like affordable housing. So I don't support this motion. I'm interested in, you know, if I've sparked something in someone's brain on a different way to go forward, I'd love to have a conversation. way to go forward, I'd love to have a conversation about a different motion, but I, I don't support the motion as it currently stands. Even, I think it's better as amended, but it doesn't go as far as I would like. Thank you.
Counsel Isaacson, any further comments? Seeing none, we'll call the, oh, Counsel Almeida.
Sorry, I thought someone else put their hand up. I, I have some similar thoughts to Counsel Isaacson, and part of that thought is if we've already, while she expressed some ideas that we could do, I, I think some of those ideas would be, would be better to implement in a future year after some, some more thought, but a conversation about percentages, I feel is maybe a little easier pill to swallow since last year we already did about 97%. We had a couple exclusions, but we did 97% for everything else. I was looking at it and looking at the 363 or I guess the 376 that's on the board now that almost has no housing involved, and since housing is a strategic goal, 376 is still not 400,000, which has been somewhat verbally committed to by, by council in a way. And I was trying to think of ways that we could creatively support housing and, and potentially support everyone else, whether it's a, a smaller percentage, and the rough numbers that I calculated here would be about 87% of the current list and then 50%, 50% of the, of the four housing partners, and that would get us to roughly 397,000 if my math was correct. If, so I'm, I'm wondering if that might be a more palatable option to maybe be the best of both worlds.
Well, we're dealing with the motion on the floor, and my final comment is that, have we added something else now? Oh, okay. There we go, we've got a final figure. Yeah, my, my comment is that LifeCycle fits in to this go-around since we have the budget to do so. And the criteria that I'm looking at is the policy criteria to demonstrate financial need was not met, that does not apply to LifeCycle. For that reason, I don't mind seeing them included, but I think we do, do need to do some further work on budget time because we're going to have a lot of things to look at, not just housing. So I'm fine with this recommendation, and I will be supporting it. All in favor? Sorry? You have one last question?
Yeah, I was going to comment on the motion.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. I did find the idea that Counsel Almeida put forward as a good one because some of the folks with, who are providing that housing are used to receiving a permissive tax exemption, and it may really skew their budgets not to, so maybe providing 50% toward those housing organizations that, that don't meet the financial need criteria, and lowering the percentage for everyone else might be a good idea, but it's very broad brush. And what we've learned in prior years is that we are often impacting very small organizations quite, like disproportionately because, you know, a small amount of money for them is, is sometimes puts them out of business, and without knowing how that's going to fall, I'm going to support the motion on, at hand. I'm going to trust staff have looked into the financial need of these organizations, and if they say they don't meet it, then I, I have to trust that. Maybe we find out that that isn't the case, and we should have done something different. But the way we prioritize all of our grant dollars is intended to be part of our policy discussion that we need to get to, and so that's, as Counsel Isaacson pointed out, why we're back in the same situation this year as last year. The policy we're following is a policy we've always followed. However, we've had a lot of discretion in how we interpreted some of these items in the past, and we've never really reached our, our limit before the last few years. And so because we are reaching our limits, how we decide to grant or not grant these permissive tax exemptions has a huge impact on our community nonprofits and how they provide services to our community. Housing is a priority of ours, but so are a lot of these other things, and we're, the broad brush approach to that concerns me a little bit, where we are taking organizations that maybe don't need the money as much as some others and impacting them disproportionately with trying to just come up with percentages like that. So I'm going to support the motion, but I am interested in a policy-level discussion that changes how we do this in the future, where all of our partners know in advance when they're applying what kind of policy decisions we are prioritizing ahead of time so that they can plan in advance, like in a rational way. Thanks.
Hey, yes, we have a lot of hard decisions to make down the road. We have a motion on the floor that has been amended. Before you on the screen, all in favor? So again, all in favor? Those opposed? Pass. Thank you very much. Okay, we now move on to reports for information. Capital, 2024 capital project status update.
Good afternoon, Council. I have a, a brief report in front of you that outlines the status of our 105 capital projects that we have on our list, and I'll just go over several of the, the projects that are, are current and impactful. One thing to note is that we have 68% of the projects that are well underway, you know, and it is listed on there that we have 14% of the projects that are completed and 54 that are in progress. That would include things like the airport paving, which is probably 98%. There was some landscaping and some final electrical work that would have been listed as in progress, but essentially it is complete. So I'll just go over some of our priority capital projects. The first one that we have is our paving program. So the tender has been issued and awarded, and we're awaiting the paving company to, to commence work in October. Right now, they have moved their plant to the peninsula and will be tackling our pavement program on their return. The Seawak restoration program, we, we got a little delayed on that one just with some staffing issues, but, but the RFP is being refined and targeted for the fall of this year with construction to take place in the winter of, of this year. Maple Sycamore, that neighborhood bikeway is well underway now with completion anticipated this month. May be some issues with final paving as, as I outlined before, that the paving company is currently on the lower peninsula. The aquatic center roof, we are targeting the tender to, to be released this fall with anticipated completion the summer of '25. The washroom and accessibility improvements, that tender closes, I think in the report it says September 11th, but we've granted an extension to the 21st of September, so with work anticipated to be complete before the spring of '25. We have the complex electrical upgrade, and we're in the process of putting together a design build tender that will be released this fall with construction commencing in the winter of '24 and work to be completed in accordance with some of our scheduled shutdowns of the complex in the summer of 2025. Library siding, we're just finalizing design on some product options and with the work anticipated to be completed by the winter, this winter. We have listed on here the Resource Recovery Center, the water main installation. The water main installation was completed a few months ago, and the component that remains is the repaving of that, of what was to be the southbound lane, but we worked with MOTI and were, instead of doing it in a separate project, we've, we've transferred that funding to MOTI, and they'll complete the entire roadway from Marine Avenue at Alberni all the way up to the, the new entrance to the Resource Recovery. So we'll have a consolidated road bed in there as opposed to differing sections of, of paving. The airport runway rehabilitation work, as you're aware, we opened up the, the runway June 8th, but currently we're on a daylight operations only, and we just had the, some of the final electrical work done, so it is currently operational. We are just waiting the nod from Transport Canada that we anticipate this week, so we should be able to go to full-time operation by the 16th of September. And I believe that, yeah, that, those are the projects, so if there's any questions on those projects and any other that are on, on the list of projects that we have.
See a number of hands in the air. We've got Counsel Southcott, followed by Counsel Dought and Counsel Isaacson, followed by Counsel Elliott. Right ahead, Counsel Southcott.
You. So I've received questions about two of the projects that you didn't speak to. One is the Gibson Beach boat launch, and I, I didn't have an answer for the person who asked me that. Is there still cooperation with the nation on that? And, or can you just speak to where that, what the status is of that and also regarding Willington Beach Campsite washrooms? Somebody asked me about that as well. I said, well, I think it's on the capital budget to replace, but.
Yeah, that one has been deferred or canceled, the Willington Beach washrooms, because of issues with archaeological, issues with, with excavation of, of a new washroom, so we're having to regroup on, on that one with respect to the Gibson's Beach launch. We're, we haven't commenced it, but we're, we're looking at an environmental review of the process on what we can actually construct there, and yes, we're, we have been working with Klauhman on that one.
Thank you, Counsel Southcott. Next up, Counsel Dought.
The Marine Drive repaving that Modi is going to do now, when are they going to do it?
Again, they're awaiting BA to return to, so they've done the highway work out to Lund, and I believe that they've completed that work, and now they've moved their plant to the peninsula, but they'll be back in a few weeks to do that work as well. So there's, there's going to be a busy paving program in October here.
Sounds like it's going to be really busy.
Counsel Dought, Counsel Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. The, so a number of the projects are not started this year. Will they be started or is it, will they be deferred to a future year? What does that mean?
There's, there's a number that haven't been started, but I think the majority of those are equipment, so it's just putting, yeah, there's a number of fleet items that are in there and equipment, and we, we are anticipating on getting the majority of them done and completed by the end of the year. But some of it may take, the delivery of equipment sometimes is a number of months out, so we won't, although we, we've tendered it and, you know, done appeal, we won't see the receipt of that equipment for a number of months.
And a second question, oh, first of all, you know, acknowledging the, the scale, the scale and scope of the work that you do, so many project, capital projects on the go, so thanks to you and your staff too for managing those. Can you remind me, the Willington Beach Campsite Washroom one, didn't we have a, a grant? Was there a grant that we had received for that? And, and so how does that impact with the, the archaeology, archaeology impacts for that?
The, yeah, the archaeology impacts were, were related to excavation and the monitoring of, of those, those issues. So it, it also included an accessible trail through there, which ran into the same, the same issues unless we were to, to fill it, and we just weren't able to make the deadline on, on that project.
So there's no, there's no longer a grant for that?
No.
You.
Comment? Sure, through, through the chair, the, the expanded scope as a result of some of the archeological requirements weren't necessarily anticipated, all of them anticipated, and by the time we were able to get to the point in the project management cycle where we were going to try to address that, we realized the scope of the grant wasn't enough, and then we ran out of the, the grant funding time finished up. So we could re-scope that project and then relook at other larger grants that would allow us to do the same thing, but we're starting back at zero.
So just while I've got you on the speaker, I've got a quick question I need to ask regard our Seawak. The archaeological aspect of that has been covered off, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that would be, for me, yes, the, we, we have a green light to go ahead on that area, but we have to, we'll have to review it once we have a final design. We, we had a provisional design that we put forward through Klauhman and the Art Branch, but now, yeah, now we're working on the environmental impact of, of that work.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Counsel Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I wanted to say how much I really appreciate getting reports like this and the information about where we're at with our capital projects. So congra, like, thank you to the staff for this report and giving this information. I like knowing what's going on in, in this kind of thing. My, my questions have to do with, I noticed that we, of our completed projects, 6% were under budget, so that's excellent. I'm, congratulations on that. My question is, of the ones we've started or haven't started with our current information, do we expect them, that we have the correct budgets for them, or do we expect any of them to be over budget?
At this point, the majority will, will fall under budget, but I'm, I'm sure there's several, once we get to final design and put it out to tender with increased construction costs, we'll see some that would be projected to go over budget, but that's where we would have to come back for either a budget amendment or a scope change.
Okay, so that kind of leads to my second question. If we are under budget on some capital projects, does that leave budget to use for contingency on other capital assets, or do we treat each budget separately and have to do a budget amendment in order to handle some of that?
We, we treat them separately as we go through.
Okay, thank you.
To Counsel Almeida.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple things to reiterate. Counsel Elliott, I appreciate the list. If I can make one visual recommendation for the next list when we have similar, color codes would be great, green for completed or yellow for in progress, would just make it visually easy to read, but I do appreciate the detail. Two questions, I think, with regards to projects. One I see at the top of the in-progress list is the two crosswalks on Alberni and at Larry Guthro, which are, have been approved two years ago by previous council, so I was just curious what the ETA is.
Yeah, so we've completed the one crosswalk on, on Alberni. Currently, we're working on a design for the Guthro Park location, just because there's some bump outs. some bump outs and some lights that have to, have to be installed there.
Will that have like a little trigger thing for?
That's, yes, we're looking, yeah.
And then the second one I was curious about, which maybe was decided before my time, the Sunset Park picnic shelter, I guess, was that going to be down by the playground at Sunset Park then?
If, it's, it's close to the, the playground equipment, though it's more adjacent to the washrooms. There was an old swing set there that is going to be the location for this new gazebo.
Cool. All right.
Councillor Almeda, and I'll just conclude by saying I appreciate the conclusion that you have written here, Mr Berteg, and it states, "Much of the city infrastructure is approaching or past the end of its estimated useful life, which results in a large and relatively complex capital plan going forward. We have to be prepared for what's coming at us." So thank you for including that and reminding us where we're at.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that report. Okay, next we have item 6.2, which is Intergovernmental Relations Protocol Working Group Update Meeting Summary. Councillor Isaacson.
Thank you Chair. So the two items in the summary are listed in the agenda. So we discussed the working group terms of reference and we developed a draft to be potentially adopted by each respective council. And so those, that draft terms of reference is attached to the agenda. And that there is the potential for an update by Klauhament Nation to Powell River City Council on the future of the mill site at some point this fall. I'll just note that the Klauhament Nation government elections is this Saturday, I believe. And they also have their annual general assembly in October. So they've got a couple of big things that might change leadership up and there may be needed some time to transition. So obviously not a specific date listed there, but there's a couple of important things that they have going on. Who addresses first?
Thank you for that report. Many questions? Councillor Elliott.
Thank you Chair. My question is that the terms of reference, are we looking for council to forward those for support or, or adoption of?
Yeah, the intention was to have that motion on this, this agenda or on Thursdays, but I, I sent a motion to Caitlin. And so I'll move that members of the committee recommend that council approve the terms of reference for the Intergovernmental Relations Protocol Working Group as attached to the September 10th, 2024 agenda.
A motion on the floor to accept the terms of reference.
To forward them to council.
Or to council? Actually by councillor Dought. Any further questions? Councillor Isaacson.
Yeah, I'll just note that because of the election, the timing is not urgent. And so if this can't be this Thursday, the next October council meeting is fine, but I'll leave it to staff discretion as to what the agenda is looking like.
Staff have any comments in that regard?
Through the Chair, we can republish with that on there for council's consideration on Thursday. We can do that by tomorrow. If that's council's wish. Thank you.
We have two further hands up. Councillor Dought first, followed by councillor Elliott.
I just wanted to speak to the motion and this is, this is the product of the working group itself. They come up with these terms of reference. We wanted to outline how we would do business and how we would try to come to conclusions and help move intergovernmental relations forward in the future. And having it approved by each council is the way we plan on going. So hopefully this will be helpful and we can get this passed so we can get on with the work. Because it's, it basically came out of the work of two meetings, one introductory meeting and another one get together to finalize these kind of wordings. And the intention of the group is, the working group is to continue giving reports to council after we have each meeting and the working group will agree on what those reports are going to be. So both this council and the Klauhament Council get the same information.
Thank you councillor Dought. Councillor Elliott, followed by councillor Isaacson.
Thank you Chair. So our normal practice, I think, when we forward stuff to council is to wait for the two weeks till the next, or wait a period of time, not, and since there is no time pressure, I would be in support of just allowing that to be in the, in the next meeting that we have after, after a week, I can't, it's in, it's in October, right? Because, yeah, yeah. So I would be in support of just having that go to the October meeting. I think that the terms of reference are clear and it's very clear that the decision-making bodies are still the councils and things come to the councils that the working group decide would like to go to the councils. And that decisions that are made coming out of the work being done there are hashed out here at this table. And I think that's appropriate. And I'm really happy to see these terms of reference come forward and I support the motion.
Councillor Isaacson.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I wanted to highlight in the meeting procedures is about the agenda items being compiled. And so I, what I'd like to see in the future is if these get approved by each of our councils is that, you know, there is a possibility for us to reach out to council and say, hey, is there anything that you, you know, that we want to be brought to this working group? And so it's, it's kind of a two-way communication stream. There may be questions that we have that, you know, can only be answered in discussions there. And so this is an opportunity to have not only information coming out of the working group, but potential agenda items being brought to the working group by, by council. And so I, I, I hope that this passes. I obviously will support it. I was part of the, the group that's recommending this to council. And I think, I think the terms of references are, are clear, but not overly restrictive. And obviously I support them.
Oh, I have a couple of quick questions in regards to clarification for the public. First of all, when you make reference to various councils and terms of reference, who are you speaking of?
So this, this draft terms of reference here is part, is for the working group, but each government, each council, so Klauhament Nation Executive Council and our council are meant to both approve them so that we, we know as a working group that our work has been endorsed by our respective governments. Because right now we're operating in a gray space where, you know, our council has approved that this exists, but we don't have a terms of reference yet that's been adopted by this council. So, so that's what I mean by each council, the, their executive council and executive committee and our council, city council, yeah.
So the item before us today was brought forward for information only, isn't that correct?
The update is for information only, but the, the working group terms of reference, the motion on the floor is that the committee recommend them to a future council meeting for adopting.
Isn't that the purpose to give it a heads up that this is coming forward? And why do we have to vote on it today without the mayor in the chamber?
The vote is just to send it to council Jim.
So yeah, we're not doing a final vote today. The final vote will be at council. This is just a, an item. Yeah, that's that committee of the whole.
What, what is the pressing issue in terms of timelines?
There isn't a pressing issue. This is why this, the, the motion at council can go to the October meeting and it can be published for the October meeting.
We have a motion on the floor? All in favor? Ask.
Community engagement.
We have item 6.3, community engagement reports. Councillors, who would like to start? Councillor Elliott?
Thank you Chair. Be happy to start. So it's been a bit of a summer break and I did a lot of travel over the summer since I've returned. I've engaged in the, sorry, I might have to go back through my notes a little bit, but I've went to the Chamber of Commerce board meeting just recently and they did update on the Blackberry Fest. They thanked the city very much for addressing the grant for, grant in kind for the use of, of the building for their upcoming event. So that was asked of us and staff responded beautifully to that and they got their grant in kind. They've decided that they thought the Blackberry Fest went fairly good. They were a little bit concerned about the withdrawal of the fireworks from the event. It was unexpected and kind of last minute. They were discussing possible reasons for that and it seemed to the chamber that the Quality Foods didn't have the money in their budget as expected. And they were saying that Quality Foods is suffering a lot of losses through theft from the Powell River store. So that might've factored in. So there is, there is that. Quality Foods is suffering a lot of financial, a loss through theft at their location. And that was brought up at the Chamber of Commerce and will definitely be an issue coming forward in many of our conversations with provincial government level conversations, the ministers and so forth. It's happening in a lot of communities, but particularly for Quality Foods in our community. So that was, you know, heart wrenching of course, and something I'll be bringing forward. The majority of August I spent traveling and I'm not sad about that at all because I went to visit family and stuff. So my, things that have been happening recently is we were accepted for two meetings with ministers at UBCM. So that will be happening next week. And in preparation for that, my nomination for, to run for Director-at-Large at UBCM for the UBCM Board was accepted. So I will be running a campaign at the UBCM to hopefully be elected to the UBCM Executive as a board member-at-large. And so that's new for me. I've not tried that before. I think better understanding how we partner and advocate with provincial levels of government may help our community in the long run and that's best done at UBCM. So that's my goal is to help our community through getting more knowledge about how that happens. And so that's my community, my report today.
Excellent. Congratulations to you taking that challenge on.
Thank you.
Councillor Southcott.
Thank you Chair. Back in, it's been two months since we've been, since we've had reports like this. So there has been some time there. I was really happy to attend the McLatt Open House down at their Arbuthys facility that's in development. Can see it being built now. The province was in attendance. There was a lot of people there representing the province. Provincial money is promised and I'm really glad to see that sector of our population being here in this community being supported that way. And I've been a supporter myself of McLatt since they arrived in this community and I'm delighted at the work that they're doing. So that was a happy event. The transportation forum that was held at the library, sponsored by Cathay Community Voices, I attended. I'm very glad to see that organization emerge. I think that organizations coming out of the community can really have an, have an influence. I think government does listen to groups of people, organizations as possibly significantly in comparison to local government as well. Later on, there was a couple of weekends ago, there was the studio art tour. Wow, I should know the number of artists involved. I think it was somewhere around 40. That wasn't all, some of them were displaying together in, in locations. And that was very successful. My wife was involved in that, with a number of other artists up at the senior center. I intended subdivision land blessing at Tishosum a couple of weeks ago. It's good to see residential, their expansion and looking after their own residential, their housing needs. It's going to go on the south side of the main village, kind of back behind where the store is. And the Sunshine Music Festival, always a way of kind of celebrating the end of the summer and back into the work season. Although I was really trying to imagine that it wasn't going to be the end of the summer, we could just kind of carry on because I've had a great summer. But I think that the gears are shifting and it was a great variety of music there. It's really an event I look forward to and I sit there and hand out Band-Aids and stuff like that, even though I'm not licensed to do that anymore. That's me, thank you.
Southcott. Councillor Dought.
So much going on. Blackberry Festival was great. Great to be downtown. Great to be seeing everybody down at the dock, everybody out, going out and coming back with a lot of fish, including councillor Palm. I think I saw him carry one or two up the dock. And that's a great part of our community to have that. I went to the ground blessing out at Klauhament and very significant that they're creating a new subdivision in the community and they're creating lots which members of the community will have the permission to occupy, but they'll also be able to borrow money to build a house and create wealth for their families, which is a new thing. Didn't used to happen under the Indian Act and it's, it was a big, big deal. And it was an interesting ceremony and I was proud to be part of it. We also had a meeting of the working group out at the Klauhament office around the same time and talking there and that, I think went well. The next thing was McLatt, I think I'm getting them out of order, but the McLatt housing announcement that they were, their treatment beds that are going to be there in Townsite are all going to be paid for by provincial organizations. So the people that go to the treatment at McLatt in Townsite will have their, their expenses paid to do that and they'll be in a recovery program. And it's the kind of treatment that I hear everybody talking about needing in our community. And maybe one of the excitement and smaller parts of their announcement that we don't hear too much about is that the same group, McLatt, and the other partners are working on a facility for women in the area too, so they can fill that need, which is, which is a big need. And what else? I was at, just last night, I was at the Townsite Rape Pair Society and they were talking about a presentation they're going to make to council on Thursday and a number of other interesting things. Small meeting, but it was interesting. So I'll just leave it at that. I think I'm missing some things because we did a lot over the summer, but I'll pass it to councillor Isaacson.
Thank you councillor Dought. Councillor Isaacson.
Thank you Chair. Number of repeat studio tour was fantastic. Happy to invest in some local art and see local studio spaces. Also was at the ground blessing for the new subdivision out in Tishosum. A couple other things, there's a newer group in town called Cinema Politica, which is hosting mostly documentaries at the Patricia, you know, approximately the last Wednesday of every month. I think it varies a bit. So this summer there was a documentary on the Watzutin Pipeline, or the, the pipeline intended to go through Watzutin Territory. And more recently, a documentary on, on harm reduction and featuring Guy Fela Chala Lo, forgetting guy's last name, who was in town last year for the fentanyl forum. So really well attended and really great to see just like an intergenerational group of people coming together to learn about a different topics. And so there were, you know, late teens up into folks in their 80s, so that was great. Attended the transportation forum that Cathay Community Voices mentioned earlier. It was really great to hear from some initiatives that are happening around the province and just share some context about some of the hurdles that we're up against and regional districts are up against when it comes to transportation in our region. I participate or I attend youth resource, youth resource sharing meetings where different service providers who provide services to youth get together and talk about any changes in programming or announcements and then also do some brainstorming on challenges. So for example, this time there was, you know, one service provider that mentioned they had a youth who wanted to be able to travel to Vancouver to visit a parent or caregiver who was, who is receiving medical treatment down in Vancouver and, and they're going to be there for a while. And so is there, are there sources of funding to help get that youth to be able to visit their parents more than once over a, you know, year, two-year period? And so that group could share information about what funding resources or who to talk to. And it was just really great to see that, that group in action and, and trying to find solutions for youth in the community. Attended a farm tour in. Attended a farm tour in Potluck at Blueberry Commons. I wasn't there for very long. I arrived late and left early, but that was hosted by VIU and the Young Agrarians and Blueberry Commons and just really excellent to hear more about the state of farming and different economic models to help make farming more sustainable. And if you haven't yet been out to Blueberry Commons or any local farm actually to see them in production, it's just fantastic, some of the food security and the food production that's happening in, in town. And then also attended International Overdose Awareness Day a couple Saturdays ago at the CRC. Fantastic mix of people, big barbecue going on, but I wanted to specially mention, there was poetry shared by a young attendee at CRC and a volunteer who helped people do printings, screen printing t-shirts. And so there was a couple of like decals that they had created and you can choose one of four and they had a bunch of, you know, blank t-shirts from the thrift store. And so people were making t-shirts and I got mine ironed and solidified by one of the CRC community members. So it was a really great day. I had a lot of fun and had I known there was a karaoke machine, I would have participated, but they, there were no takers. I didn't even hear that the karaoke machine was up for grabs, so I missed that. Anyways, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been busy. Councillor Almeida.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I feel like, looking at my list, I feel like I missed as many things as I probably had a chance to attend. So similar to other councillors, I was able to take my family to Blackberry Fest and to Sunshine Music Fest, so those are well done by the organizers. And as was previously mentioned, I was with Councillor Isaacson and Councillor Southcott at the transportation, transportation session held by the Cathay Community Voices. But in mid-August, I was able to attend the Twin Kennedy Concert, a couple of local girls who have came back home for a concert after several years and they did a great show at the Evergreen. And then the following week, the Kings had their fundraising banquet down at Dwight Hall, so some great food put up by the catering team and a great event overall. And the Kings start their season actually this coming weekend. And, but this past weekend, actually, just by a random fluke in a way, I found out about an event down in Seashelt and was able to go down and there, the Sunshine Coast Community Forest actually has a wood expo. And so being a slight hobbyist, working with wood, I thought it'd be fun to go down with my father-in-law and they've been putting on that event now for almost 10 years. And it coincidentally also happened to coincide with Car Free Day. So in the downtown core of Seashelt, they had a farmer's market, a wood expo and Car Free Day, all within a few blocks of each other. So it was a great event to see, a great event to see something different and other crafters that were out there and just got the, the brain spinning a little bit about other potential events, although we, we might have too many events on our calendar as it is up here. But good to see some different events being put on in that community over there.
Oh, right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. One thing I forgot to add.
Your Councillor Almeida.
Yeah, thank you. Forgot to add, the Upstart Housing Roundtable met yesterday. At some point, when there is a terms of reference, I think, I think it would make sense to have an official council liaison to that group, but I've been trying to help move things along. There is a roundtable on the lower coast that has a couple of subcommittees and for seniors and homelessness and for workers' housing. And so I'm just waiting to receive that so I can work with, help, help some of the folks come up with a terms of reference. And then, yeah, definitely would like to see it come to council so that there could be some formal council participation. I think they benefit from, you know, part of the conversation yesterday was everyone making updates related to housing. And so I reiterated things that the group would have already known. For example, the, the announcement of the possibility of the next supportive housing up near the hospital and the request for expressions of interest related to Barnett Site that council directed previously. And also let them know that the permissive tax exemptions were up for discussion today. And so that's likely where, where one of the attendees thought, well, I heard about that and I'll write a letter. So that, yeah, so also was at that yesterday. And no real big programming updates, but there's definitely a hunger to work together to, to get more affordable housing built in our community. Thank you.
Just to clarify and one comment there, councillor liaison to your working group, what do you mean in that regard?
So we, I think it's a council liaison policy where if a group wants to have a member of council be an official member of it, to be able to have two-way communication between that group and council, that council appoints some sort of liaison. So for example, Councillor Elliott is the liaison to Chamber of Commerce. You don't sit on the board, I believe, or no, councillor, or sorry, Mayor Wasno is the appointee, you are the alternate.
Yeah.
But like, that person would be a communication liaison. And so I think when the Housing Roundtable, you know, establishes itself more formally, it would benefit from having someone on council, attend their meetings and be able to share updates related to council and also take information back to council about what the, what kind of discussions are going on about housing. So they're not a formal group yet, but I think I would expect that would likely happen in the future.
So just to be clear, you're not asking to add to the three that are already representing the city on your working group?
I'm not talking about the, the working group with Tlamon Nation, I'm talking about a Housing Roundtable. So different, different group, yeah. Housing Roundtable is what I'm talking about.
Oh, I see, Housing Roundtable. I thought you were talking about your working group, sorry. So, yeah, I'm going to keep my comments very brief. I've really enjoyed my summer off, as you can see from my tan. I've done a lot of fishing and it's been a great summer that way and spending time with my grandkids, both in town and out of town on Harbier Island was fantastic. I've attended a number of functions over the summer with various community groups and taken a number of items in and learned a little bit about here, there and everywhere in terms of our political process. And very much enjoyed the gathering last night of the Concerned Citizens Group, attending that. It was well attended and I think it was over 230 residents in attendance at the Evergreen Theatre. And I'm just going to leave it at that at this point. So moving along on today's agenda, we have new business. Item 8.1, which is the Ferry Advisory Committee, a late council liaison replacement, and that is to replace myself on the ferry committee. I'm just going to say before council weighs in that I very much enjoyed my time on our local ferry advisory group. And over the course of my 16 years, going back to when I was pre-not elected, way back 16 plus years ago, when they used to have open forums for BC ferries at the Town Centre Mall and half the town showed up with the, the issues we were dealing with with ferries and older ferries at the time. We have come a very long way in that regard. And just to mention a couple, free passage for all youth and sporting teams was an initiative that I brought forward to Mr. Todd Stone, who was the ferry minister at the time and when I went to UBCM. And when we brought that back, put that in his ear, we appointed a couple of individuals, Mr. Doug Skinner, who was the board member of the school district to take that on and take charge of handing out those passes for youth groups. So the school district's done a great job in that regard. We have also obviously got three new ferries that service our area, that we've come a long way in terms of the machinery. And lastly, we helped out medical passes where you can phone ahead and make sure you're going to get on a ferry. Where just two years ago, I had a medical appointment in Courtney, showed up an hour early to a noon run and missed my medical appointment with no avenue to make it. And that set me back months in terms of my surgery that I had later on. And in terms of issues that are before us on the ferry, obviously, as was stated here previously, we have to find a way for priority boarding for Powell River residents, both to and from Vancouver. That is a major concern. When you're coming home, you want to be guaranteed to get home and not sitting for a number of hours. Just this summer, I was in Vancouver visiting the grandkids and it took me 12 hours to get home. I mean, that's how bad it's getting in the summer months. And this is not acceptable. And I understand BC ferries is under budget, they've got a deficit of $500 million and our government's got to deal with that, but there is no easy answer and we have to keep pressing BC ferries and the, whoever is ever in government for better service for Powell River residents. And I'll just leave it at that one on the ferry front and I'll open it up for council to appoint somebody else to the position of the ferry advisory committee here locally.
Question, Chair. I'm wondering, I know that Councillor Elliott sits on that role as a member of the regional district. Is it appropriate for you to serve in both capacities or is it really important to have two voices from the, each level of government there?
So the, the role, the role where I sit on the ferry advisory committee to represent the regional district is at the pleasure of the regional district board. So that could change at some point. There's no, in fact, most of the times it's an area representative that sits on that, on that committee. So if, if the regional district board decides to change their representative, then the city wouldn't have one.
Yes, my question was if you, if we appoint as a city director, as a, the...
Oh, I see. Then you wouldn't have a duplication.
Yeah.
I think that would work too, yeah. And then if the regional district changed their member, I would still be there, is what you're asking. Yeah, okay.
This council's wish. Councillor Almeida.
I'm perfectly content with Councillor Elliott if she wants to do double duty. I am also happy to fulfill the role or act as an alternate if necessary.
We have a motion on the floor, Councillor Dought.
No, I wasn't going to make a motion. I was just going to point out that council recently sent a letter to BC ferries asking to have more local government involvement. Something we've asked them for is to have more representation on BC ferries advisory committees, not less.
Good point, Councillor Dought. Councillor Elliott.
I would nominate Councillor Almeida if he's wishing to fulfill that role. And if he accepts it or if someone seconds it, we could use that as the motion.
Moved by Councillor Elliott. We have a second, seconded by Councillor Dought. We have a motion on the floor. Councillor Isaacson.
I'll just move an amendment that Councillor Elliott be appointed as the alternate in case you can represent us there as well if Councillor Almeida can't show up.
Councillor Almeida, will you accept your nomination?
Yes.
Very much. All in favor.
So just procedure-wise, the moved amendment should probably be addressed first and then the motion as amended?
Second, Councillor Isaacson's amendment.
Yep. So we're recording on the amendment. All in favor. Unanimous. Now back to the main motion. All in favor. Unanimous. Thank you very much. That takes us to the end of our meeting where we have a motion to go into a closed meeting.
Questions first, Chair.
We have a question period.
We have question period first.
We have the question period before that? Oh, yes.
We do, it's switched.
So, not seeing the press in the gallery tonight, I'm going to reach out to the public for questions and I see Mr. Roger Whittaker coming forward.
Thank you, Chair and Council. And what I have actually is an apology today and it is an item on the agenda raised by two people that spoke tonight. One was in the chair when he mentioned attending a meeting last night and one of the delegates mentioned that meeting as well. And the apology is delivered to Mr. Almeida, Councillor Almeida. I made a statement last night that was delivered in public and I'll all apologize to Councillor Almeida personally. I believe a public statement that was incorrect should be apologized for publicly. And I'd like to do that, extend also to Councillor Almeida, thanks for attending last night and staying for the entire event, which I didn't know you had done, and, and listening to all the points of view, which is exactly what last night's meeting was all about, was listening to all points of view and following process. So I thank you for taking the time out of your busy life to, to attend that meeting and appreciate it a great deal. I know everybody that knows you attended appreciates it as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Whittaker.
Apologize publicly.
Thank you.
That apology and thanks for the clarification, Mr. Whittaker. Who else would like to step forward? Any questions out there? Ms. Martin.
Good evening, council. So first of all disclaimer, I, Tlamon Nation does not have permission to use photos, video or audio of me in any format, in any way, including the documentary currently being filmed. So I appreciate the city's response with the letter.
Ms. Martin, could you just speak directly into that so everybody could hear it?
Okay. Did you get the first part?
Did we get the first part? Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I appreciate the city's response to the letter from my lawyer, Glenn Blackett of the Justice Institute for Constitutional Freedoms advising that the proposed procedure bylaw and code of conduct are being vetted by the city's lawyers. The letter also states that Councillors Isaacson and Dought are irredeemably biased regarding the possible name change and must recuse themselves from further debate and decision-making in connection with the name change. Councillors Isaacson and Dought, do you plan to recuse yourselves from future C3 meetings and any other debate about the name change?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you for that. So you're going to be quite fine spending city money on a lawsuit when you know very well you are in a, you are irredeemably biased. There is nothing that anyone can say to change your minds about the name change. You know that, I know that, the whole bloody town knows that. And as well, Councillor Elliott and Southcott, both of you are also biased and I believe irredeemably biased on this matter. Is there anything either of you would, that would change your mind that there has to be a name change?
Councillor Elliott.
Thank you. I don't plan to recuse myself. The statute for a name change actually belongs with the province and so there won't be a decision of council to change the name. There would be a decision of a council to forward a request to the province potentially in the future. I think our strategic plan sets out the process that we're looking toward and we as a council decide together. We've all received much advice from legal and so forth. I understand that you believe these things that you're saying. I respectfully disagree.
And my understanding is that council makes a recommendation on whether or not to change the name. You have already decided the name is changing. It appears to me and to many that you do not care what the electorate think. So I'm very disappointed in you as a council, in you, in you as a council. I am just, I just can't believe what kind of people you have turned into. I am so sorry for you and I'm disgusted.
Ms. Martin, before you go, Councillor Southcott has a hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thanks, Ms. Martin. Since this is a direct question, I will answer it for myself. And that is that I don't agree with you, that my mind is closed. I think that's language used in documents to assess whether elected representatives are capable of debating questions even as gnarly as this one in, in decisions, legal decisions in Canada, because I read a little bit about this. As for me, I'm dismayed at the division that's in this community. I don't really, my view is a lot less firm on what should happen.
I don't really, my view is a lot less firm on what should happen with regard to the name changing yes or no. I don't believe that's the right question, actually. And I have written fairly extensively on that on a blog site that I have, which was referenced in Blackett's.
Letter.
Document. So if you want to understand what my view is, and I'm speaking for myself, I'll say it again, I've written it there. And that's why I don't agree with your position on where I stand on this. Thank you.
And Counsel Douth, you have a comment.
Ms. Martin, you asked one question, and I answered it, and then you made a series of statements. And I want to make it absolutely clear to you that I do not agree with your assertion that I am biased or have a closed mind or have previously made a decision on anything that comes before counsel.
I think everything in the letter indicates otherwise. We have it on camera. We have documents. Anyway, we, I believe you are irredeemably biased. I am very disgusted and disappointed in mainly you four. Okay, so good night.
Ms. Martin, just before you go, I want to clarify one thing that was said here this evening that I think is very important, and that is Counsel Elliot stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's up to counsel at some point to forward the recommendations of the province. We have made the decision as part of our strategic plan to put forward an opinion poll on the next election that will ask a question in that regard. Counsel Elliot, I'm asking you, is that still your intent?
I stand behind the strategic plan. The words sometimes used to describe what's in the strategic plan are a little less accurate than I would like to see. So the words that are in the strategic plan indicate that that opinion poll should be preceded by a robust community consultation, which we have not decided on a process for as of yet. And I stand behind the strategic plan. I think we need to get out there and start talking to our community, and we as a counsel should be trying to decide on a process. Mainly, we don't have budget attached to it, and we had been hoping to get a grant to cover some of that, and that grant did not come through. So that puts us in a bit of a predicament. And so I don't know how we move forward with that item without identifying a budget to do so. It's not up to me. It's up to us as a full counsel how we implement our strategic items. And since we haven't made decisions about any of that, I would be remiss to make comments about that, given that counsel hasn't decided precisely how we're moving forward. And that would be up to counsel to discuss all the options and decide.
So let's let us be clear, because I want the public to hear your response.
I'm sure they.
You said it's up to counsel. You have no intent.
We're in a point, we're in a position on the agenda here where we're talking about questions from the public rather than debates among counsel. And I'm afraid that the chair is debating with Counsel Elliot about her position rather than dealing with what we should be on the agenda, which is questions from the public.
Clarification he's asking for.
I'm asking for clarification, Counsel Douth. I'm not arguing with anyone. I'm just trying to get the comments sorted out that has been made, that Counsel Elliot intends to abide by the recommendation of the strategic plan to have an opinion poll in the next election to deal with that item and not change course. Is that your intent, Counsel?
One of order, you're not actually stating what's in the strategic plan appropriately because it's a single item that talks about a process that starts with community engagement and ends with an opinion poll, which I am entirely supportive of and have said so, voted for it. It's been decided by counsel. The way you phrase it makes it sound like a standalone, which it is not.
No, it's not a standalone. It's part of the process.
Correct.
That's the point I was trying to make, that you still stand behind that that item. So thank you.
I stand behind all counsel decisions.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Palm, Counselor Palm.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, for coming forward this evening. Is there anyone else out there that would like to? We have a call? First, yeah, go ahead on the call first, and then we'll go to Ms. Medina.
What is your topic?
We're in a position on the agenda where we're talking about questions from the public.
Sorry, sorry. Could you could you please state your name?
He's now joining.
Afraid that the chair is debating.
Diane Sparks.
Counsel Elliot about her position rather than dealing with.
Can't hear the individual.
Diane Sparks.
Is it Diane Sparks?
Correct.
Okay, Diane, go right ahead. I can hear you now.
Okay, so I just have a question. I know I heard Counsel Elliot saying that they wanted conversation with the public about the issue of the name change. However, they never showed up to the meeting last night for the public to address the public about the issue. And I'm still of the opinion that Counselors Isaacson, Elliot, Southcott, and Douth are in have their bias about the name change. They want the name change, and they are not going to listen to the public. They aren't listening to the public at all that we don't want the name change. We have given polls. We've proven that 95% of the people don't want a name change. They're still not listening to us. My question is, will you recuse yourself from this, from the name change controversy because you are biased? And I heard Douth say already, Counsel Douth say, no, he's not going to. I'm assuming Elliot and Isaacson and Southcott feel the same way. So you're not going to represent the electorate of Powell River. Is that right?
Counsel Elliot.
I'm going to answer the question, but I also want to point out to the chair that it's a repeat question. And so we can't be sitting here having people ask the same question over and over. That's just a procedural thing. So.
Well, yes, you can, because I'm asking a question.
Pardon me, Diane Sparks. Excuse me, I have the floor. Thank you.
We have a response from Counsel Elliot.
Thank you for allowing me down the floor. I respectfully disagree with your position. I am not recusing myself. The concern I have for community engagement is around counsel deciding on a process that meets the criteria spelled out from the province for community engagement. So I have no problem attending various things in the community. I couldn't attend last night. I had a conflict. So not everything that happens in the community is something I can attend. So anyways.
And you won't allow the mayor to have a meeting either and let the public be.
She's interrupting again.
Wow, yeah, that's right. I'm interrupting.
She's interrupting again. So anyway, the answer is no, I do not intend to recuse myself. The community is welcome to have tons of events. I cannot attend all of them. Members of council are allowed to have events if they want to, including the mayor. And none of the rest of the council is able to prevent that. The decisions of council that we make together is what I was referring to as far as process, and we haven't had those decisions yet. We haven't had a process come forward to endorse or not endorse. And so, no, I would not recuse myself. I think I've been very upfront that I think we need a proper process, and I have even described what I believe a proper process to be. We as counsel haven't haven't waited, we haven't decided any of that yet, and we need to. So that would be probably a good thing for our community for us to get in and figure that out. Thank you.
And the proper process would be for the public to have a vote, yes or no, do you want the name changed? That's the proper process. That's a democratic process.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Is there anything, any other questions?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Medina.
Diane.
Yeah, thank you for taking the question. I just wanted to.
On where I stand on it. Thank you. Got somebody online.
Is now exiting.
Just hang on, Ms. Medina.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's sort out what we've got online here. Who who is calling in? Okay, sir, could you repeat the question you would like to? Is he still there?
They're gone now. It was a delay.
He's gone. Okay. Ms. Medina, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just on the question of bias, I wonder, Counsel Palm, would you recuse yourselves? Since last night you were very vocally in favor of the position of the Concerned Citizens Group and very vocally supportive of them and very vocally in against the name change and what I perceive as against reconciliation generally, but that's my opinion. But you did very much state very clearly your bias. And so if we're going to talk about bias, as Ms. Keller-Martin has suggested, why is this bias not considered valid?
I'm going to repeat my position on the name change one more time. I thought I've already repeated in here several times now. Our citizens were asked to come to a number of meetings two years ago. There was good attendance. However, during those meetings, not a lot of voices of our citizens were reflected in the outcome.
What do you actually mean by that?
What I'm saying is.
Which citizens are you referring to?
Please, can you let me finish?
I'm just asking because it's very confusing what you're saying.
What I'm saying is our citizens need a voice in the situation, and I've said that all along.
But the Concerned Citizens is a very particular group. It's a very organized, small group. It does not reflect all the citizens of the community.
Last night's group wasn't very small.
But there was a small organizing group, and 390 people are not the full actual amount of people in this community. So you very clearly made it a position. So you have a bias. All I'm all I'm trying to reinforce here is that there is a bias.
Please, would you allow me?
As Diane Sparks has interrupted numerous times and others, it seems disingenuous to not accept the fact that there is a question regarding bias as was brought forth here, where you displayed a very extreme bias.
If you'll allow me, I'll answer your question one more time that I've said in here numerous times. During those meetings, being a teacher at Brook Secondary for a great number of years, I was very impressed when a young lady that had recently graduated stood up at the meeting, and she looked around in the gathering, and she said, I can hear from the citizens that maybe they're not ready for a name change. That was her impression. However, she went on to state that it might not get changed soon, but my generation will keep on at it, and eventually it may get changed, something to that effect, not word for word, but something to that effect. That's what I have been applying to the situation since that time, and I have a very open mind, and I am all about listening to the citizens of this community as I was doing last night, and that's what I stated.
Which is what all the other counselors are doing as well.
Yes.
The notion of bias is.
It's all about the dialogue to me.
Yes, but the idea of actually promoting this concept, and I'm bringing it up because this idea of bias is falls flat when you're describing what you're describing, which is essentially what all the other counselors are doing.
That's my response to you.
And neither are the other counselors. Do you agree?
Fair enough. They've all stated their positions.
And I just want that on the record also to show that everybody's been democratically elected here. Everyone has a right to have their position.
Absolutely.
Democracy, and I want this on the record also, does not mean that you only agree with things that you want to have. That's not democracy.
It's not me. It's what the citizens, because I represent the citizens.
The Concerned Citizens of this town are only a small group of people. They do not reflect the full scope of this community.
I never said the citizens' group. I said the entire population of Powell River. That's who I represent.
But last night you were very supportive specifically of the Concerned Citizens.
There was a lot of citizens there.
You stated that, the Concerned Citizens Group, and you're very clear, everyone knows what that group is.
I just stated my opinion on the subject.
So I'm just asking you, will you recuse your position based on your bias?
Okay, Ms. Medina, I've had enough.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's wrap up the situation. Mr. Richards, come on forward.
Thanks for letting me talk. I have a question. Seems to me that we we heard a motion in this in this council that there would be a survey or some type of a survey, and there was another amendment to that motion saying that you would add a name to that survey. They would give people a chance to choose a name. Now, on the city website, it says there will be a survey, and then it says at a later date, a name will be chosen. It doesn't say it's on the survey on the city website. I'm pretty sure that's what it says. Now, I may be wrong, but to me, it's two separate things.
Yeah, I can't answer that. Counsel Almeida, go right ahead.
I happen to have opened the strategic plan during our conversation today. Point two under intergovernmental relations says, take substantive steps toward reconciliation with the Telomination by engaging the public on the topic of a name change, including a possible new name leading up to a public opinion poll timed with the 2026 municipal election. So that's when it says there's no reference to a later date for another part. But I would like to also point out, since the opinion poll, which is not legally binding because city council has no legal standing for it, but since it's also occurring at the next municipal election, the decision or results from that poll will not be this council's. Any further ramifications after that opinion poll will be left on the table for the next council to then deal with. So, you know, but as as requested many times, the poll is there on the on the agenda to be there for 2026. That's legally all the city can do as city council, because as Counsel Elliot pointed out, it's a provincial decision to make to whether a change happens or not. So the poll is there to listen to the community, and the plan is to have some engagement over the next couple of years. We haven't planned that engagement out yet, but that's where we stand right now.
Well, my point is if you go to the city website and you go to name change and you read the column on the right-hand side, unless it's been changed, it said there will be a vote or a poll, and then it says to the effect that there will be a name at a later time. So unless it's been changed, I saw that a couple of weeks ago.
I have to clarify that. Counsel Elliot, do you have anything further to add?
I just wanted to answer Mr. Richardson's question. So if there is a discrepancy between a decision in council and information on the website, the actual decisions of council or motions of council are considered the correct information. And so we don't know everything that's on the website and whether it's accurate or not or maybe even predates the previous decision. But as far as I remember, we've never had a decision of council that uses the words that you're talking about on the website. So it very well may be there, but it isn't in a decision of council, and so it may not be the accurate information.
Well, that may be the case, but you're telling the public that, and that is what the public believes, regardless of what you're saying here in council or putting elsewhere.
I was just trying to answer your question. You were asking a question about that discrepancy, and the answer is if it's if the decisions of council are not reflected well in the web material, it's the decisions of council that prevail, not not the web information.
Yes, but isn't it? Is it not the responsibility of this council and this city and this staff to make sure you're giving the public the truth?
It may be that.
If that is the case.
It be that our website information needs to be corrected, if that's.
Okay, but why hasn't it been? It's been years.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yes, we appreciate your comments, Mr. Richard. We will have staff look into it.
Thank you.
And we will make the appropriate corrections.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Isaacson.
I could speak to exactly what Mr. Richards is talking about. He's talking about a part of the website that references the engagement process that happened in 2021. And so that information was information that was related to the work of the working group, not to city council or not to the city. And so it happened to be hosted on the city website, but perhaps it isn't clear on each of those pages that the content is related to the working group and doesn't represent decisions of council.
I don't believe it represented decisions of council back then either.
Yeah, it didn't.
I think it's inaccurate information that probably should be corrected.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification. Any further questions coming from the gallery? Nearing none. I think it's time to call for adjournment.
A motion to go into closed?
Oh, yes, the motion to go in closed. Let's have that read out.
That, the committee move into a closed meeting to discuss matters covered by the Community Charter under Sections 90, Bracket 1, K, Negotiations and Related Discussions Respecting the Proposed Provision of a Municipal Service, that are at their preliminary stages, and that, in the view of the council, could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public.
Yep. Seconded, Counselor Almeida. All in favor? Thank you very much. We have anonymous, and we will call for, are we going to convene? Are we going to stay in?
I'd like to take a break, and I'd like to give all our friends a chance to say goodbye.
We don't, we don't have to adjourn this meeting, because we're going in camera, and we will adjourn later. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.